Good evening. I'd like to call to order our regular scheduled council meeting for Monday night, May 6, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our evening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. But everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, Bettis, could you take the roll, please?
Good evening, Your Honor. Mayor Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Squires? Councilmember Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
Councilmember Fetter?
Here.
Councilmember Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Show Councilmember Squires absent and excuse, please.
Yes, sir.
Item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Still moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lynch.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Jones. Any discussion from council? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker? Aye. Moving on to community events, we have Mr. Hank Cable.
Thank you, Your Honor and council, and the millions of TV viewers that we have out there. I'm here tonight to support a charity bowl fundraiser that is being sponsored by the Garden City Lions Club, and I think most people are familiar with the Lions Club. It's the largest service industry or service organization in the world. We support hearing impaired and blind, and we try and raise all the money we can for these people that need glasses that cannot afford them, or hearing aids that cannot afford them. Anyway, this charity event is Saturday, May 18th, at Town and Country Lanes in Westland. It's 5:00, Saturday, May 18th. Town and Country Lanes. It's $20 per person, includes three games of bowling, three games of nine-pin, no tap, shoes and pizza. We have a lot of basket raffles that you can bid on, and that's going to be a big deal for us. Have a 50-50 raffle, four-person teams, and if we don't have four people show up, then we'll team you up with a different team. We've had a lot of response for it. Anyway, anyone who wishes to, it's on the City Channel, thanks to Mr. Dan York, you can get the information there, but Cindy Wagner, 313-407-0239, or Larry Huff, 734-6600920, or Vicki Kowalik, 734-524-1330. And again, all this money goes to help with hearing impaired and vision impaired people. So, as a side note, the last two weeks, we had our cane sales on the street, and I think all the people, they were very generous this year. We had a great response this year, selling white canes on the street, and all of you people that were so generous, thank you very much. It was a great event for us. We raised a lot of money, again, to support people for hearing and blind impaired. So anyway, March 18th, 2013, Town and Country Lanes, Westland, 5:00.
May 18th. May 18th.
May 18th.
You said March.
(Laughter)
Because I don't think anybody's going to be there.
May 18th.
On that other date.
2013, Town and Country Lanes in Westland, and we don't have a bowling alley in Garden City anymore. We used to do it at Garden Lanes, but they're no longer there, so we have to go outside the city, which I'm sad to say we have to do. So it's Town and Country Lanes in Westland, which is at Wayne Road and Palmer. So thank you very much. Anyone has any concerns, see me after. I have flyers. If anyone wants a flyer, come and see me, I have them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cable. And then we have Bill Chevek, DDA, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Bill Chevcek from Dearborn Heights, and I have a compliment to the city and to the DDA and to whoever was involved with the Middle Belt-Ford Road interchange at Christmas time. Seeing all those lights and the decorations up on it, in that two blocks each way on Ford Road and two blocks each way on Middle Belt, boy, that brought back a lot of memories from my younger days of living in Dearborn and how things used to be dressed up, and I compliment the city and anybody involved with that. And then I got one more pat on the back for you, the tulips. They're in full bloom, folks, and it looks gorgeous at that intersection. And thank you for letting me cut ahead of everybody.
No problem, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
I just want to say that Bill is at the Dearborn Heights meetings every other week, and I see him there, and he made the same announcement at the Dearborn Heights City Council a couple of weeks back, and he wanted to make sure that he came to Garden City to let us know what a beautiful job we've done with the DDA area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming here. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, next we have comments from state and county officials. I don't see any state or county officials here, so we will go to petitions and communications, which we have none tonight, no public hearings. We'll go on to item nine, the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, items A-1 through 7, and we would also like to read number 7 out loud.
Go ahead.
Support.
Support from Ms. Dodge. Go ahead, Ms. Lynch.
Okay. The mayor oral reappointments, planning commission, to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Darren Stark, Willby Pister, and Eric Turnbull to the planning commission with terms to expire March 16th, 2016.
And to confirm the mayor's reappointment through the zoning board of appeals of Dick King, Fred May, and Larry Soupy, also to expire on March 31st, 2016.
And to confirm the reappointment to the board of trustees for the DDA, Orin Mizony Jr., and Robert Squires with the term to expire 4/30/17.
Okay. Any comments from council? From the general public? Mr. Buckner?
I just have one comment. I'm not sure if it's legal or illegal. Robert Squires being in the party, is there a conflict of interest with his wife being on council?
No. Okay. Any other? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Moving on to our B agenda, B1, city manager contract.
Mayor?
Ms. Dodge?
I was a little bit shocked to see this in the B agenda. Normally, when we are still negotiating a contract, we do it in closed session. The final product, we bring to the floor, but just like with any other contract, you don't negotiate it on the open floor. It's embarrassing for the candidate, it's embarrassing for the council. I just want to know how inspired we come on the agenda when we still have a lot of negotiating to do, and questions to ask.
Well, I put it on there for discussion purposes, and if we wanted to make a committee of three, like we've had in the past, and have that three, those three council members negotiate a contract with the acting city manager, and then bring it back to council to vote on. So...
And does it have to be a committee of three, or can we just all go in? Because normally, the very end, we all go in anyways.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Bettis, could we weigh in on this?
It was my impression also that we could go into closed session to discuss the contract. However, I conferred with our city attorney, Mr. Cronin, and he indicated that that would not be appropriate. It would be a violation of the Closed Open Meetings Act, and so because council directed me to facilitate this, I did go ahead and put it on the agenda because I was told we are not allowed to go into closed session.
Okay, so I'm going to tell the city manager, since the '70s, since we've had a city manager, we've negotiated behind closed doors, brought the finished project, product to the floor, and then voted on it.
I believe that's always been done.
That's been done since the '70s. It was done with the last city manager.
Not with Darwin.
One at a time. Go ahead, Ms. Dodge.
So I'm curious as to why we can't, I mean, it's embarrassing for everybody to negotiate on the open floor.
Oh, you said the city manager, questions to me?
Yeah.
There is no provision under state law that covers this going into closed session. I went through all the exemptions. I talked to Ms. Bettis about it at some length. There are no exemptions under the Open Meetings Act that would allow this particular matter to go into closed session. By way of background, Ms. Bettis and I have talked about, and in fact, I've talked to Mr. Mury about proposed agreement. My understanding, and maybe I was misled, my understanding was this group was involved in negotiating. Now, if we were not involved in negotiating, then we're a long way from having a contract. But I understand city council has the final say on any terms of any agreement that struck. I was not given any specific direction on the provisions in the contract, except from my conversations with Ms. Bettis and the discussions I had with Mr. Mury.
I thought you worked on the draft that we got?
I did.
Okay, because that's all that we've got. That's all we've talked, we haven't talked compensation.
That's all we have is your draft.
We haven't talked salary, we haven't asked questions, we haven't done anything because we've been waiting for, to be able to go into closed session, as we've always done, as we did with the last city manager when you were with us.
I was never asked the question.
Ms. Lynch?
Just as a point of clarification, with the last city manager, I know that we had, excuse me, committee of three people, because I was on the committee, Al Briscoe was on the committee, and...
And the mayor was on the committee.
And I believe that's correct.
But we still, as a group, went behind closed doors and hammered out the final.
I think though that was after we had worked with the city manager, filled in the numbers and spaces, then we did that. But the first portion of it, it was the committee of three.
So is that different to the city attorney? Committee of three?
I just answered the question that I was asked. Would this negotiation and discussion of the proposed contract be allowed into closed session under the Open Meetings Act? And the answer is no. I don't find any exemption that applies, and we went through them thoroughly.
So you're saying we got to do it out here?
Well, this is different. What's been proposed here is different than the process previously, apparently. I wasn't involved in the previous negotiations.
Then council would be allowed to do the subcommittee?
The council is always, has the authority to offer a subcommittee, designate a subcommittee to negotiate, but then they have to bring it to the council, and the council has to decide it ultimately in the open session.
Okay. So why don't we do a committee again, then, guys?
I have no problem with that.
I have no problem with it.
All right. Who would like to be on the committee?
What's wrong with the entire council?
If I may, anytime the council meets on a matter of public policy, you have to schedule it as an open meeting, post it.
That's why a committee's got to be three, for whoever jumped in out there. If you have four or more, it's an open meeting. Three council members can meet in a committee. That's why it's got to be three.
So I'm still confused as to why the last city manager and the ones before, all of them that we have hired, we have been able to go into closed session and fine-tune it, and then the final product be brought out for us to vote on. What's different with this one? Because we have not, none of us participated in putting this draft together.
That is correct. Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I can answer part of the question. I know with Dave Harvey and Dave Kosis both, and with John Bayless, all three of those were under a different attorney firm. I can tell you that one, because that was under Owen.
But the last one, which we did, was with this...
But I know we started with the committee of three with the last one, so we pretty much hammered it all out as a committee before anything came to council.
But even with the last city manager, who Tim's firm was involved in, we still went into closed session, fine-tuned it, and then brought the final product out to the floor. So what's the difference? I don't understand what the difference is.
All I can tell you is I was never asked the question.
I was just going to say, we may never have asked that.
I'm not always aware of what council's doing, because I'm not here.
Right. We might not have asked the question, whereas this time, the question was asked.
Okay.
I'd like to see a committee of three.
All right. We'll do a committee of three. That committee can throw in the numbers, bring it back to council. Who would like to be on the committee?
I'll be on it.
Mr. Jones?
I have no problem if somebody else wants to do it.
I don't want to be part of the committee, but I have some very strong feelings, as you all might know, on what, if there is a contract, so I would prefer if someone, one person checks with me, or I can discuss it on Mr. Cronin's advice in the open, but compared to what this is written, it doesn't even come close.
I'd be welcomed. I would welcome input from non-subcommittee members of their feelings on the topic.
Do you want to give your comments now?
Oh, well, I don't know.
Let's make sure we settle this one.
Well, we need one more committee member.
Jody, do you want to be on it?
Unless you want to do it.
No, I don't have to be on.
Okay.
You three are here.
I'm sorry, that's Lynch, Jones, and Dodge.
Councilmember Lynch, Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Dodge. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Fetter.
Should I discuss my issues with what was given to us, knowing it's a starting point? You would want to hear what I have issues with. Two sections. Section five, fringe benefits. It's a rather large section, but the last three, four lines is what I had an issue with. Now, Chief Mury, I believe still is, but has said he will, he is still a member of his union, but has said he will step down, I believe, upon confirmation of city manager. But at this point, he's still the liaison or president of his union, of the department heads. In this section, it says, "Acknowledged by the city of Garden City that Chief Mury is entitled to the benefits of the collective bargaining agreement as negotiated, and that the herein described employment as city manager does not impact or affect any of Chief Mury's rights or obligations under the collective bargaining agreement, or any future negotiated collective bargaining agreements." Those one, two, three, four, five words, I went ballistic. So basically, what this is saying is, upon his confirmation, if it happens, he'll, even if he steps down as a union individual and doesn't partake in the activities for the protections offered a union person, we're still going to give him, he's going to still be available for the collective bargaining agreements that happen in the future. Absolutely not. You can't have it both ways. The other is pensions. I've been thinking on this for a week, because I'm trying to find a way of discussing this without putting his personal information out there. So what I'm going to simply do at this point is this. Under pensions, it says, "The above described salary is pensionable." The above described salary hasn't been determined yet. That's something we're going to have to determine. So whether it's a dollar or $100,000, this is what this is referring to. So whatever that salary is, it's pensionable, i.e., salary attributed to the city manager employment shall be part of the average financial compensation for purposes of retirement benefits available to the city manager, both as chief of police and city manager. Two issues. As far as I know, we always, a city manager never partook in our city retirement system. They got a percent to their pay, which I understand was about 2%, it was deposited in a 401K or money market of their choice. When they left our employment, on the, how many number of years they were here, they left with nothing other than what we put in the account and what they matched. They left with no benefits, financial or health or anything else. They walked away clean. In this case, let's say we, instead of paying Chief Mury $100,000, we're going to pay him 50. You've heard council members saying how cheap that's going to be. We're going to save money. According to this, we're going to add 50, and I'm just using 50. It could be 30, it could be 20, it could be 40. We're going to take that amount of money and add it to his current salary, and then that amount is going to be put into the pension system. So his pension's going to go up. If it's truly 50, now, I heard 40, I've heard 30, 40, and 50. I went high, because normally, if you can stomach something on the high end, everything else is okay. Based on his current salary, if we add $50,000 to it, his pension would increase $2,600 a month to $7,700. It's an increase of $31,250 a year. What the issue is here is this isn't cheap at all. If Chief Mury lasts the average number of years in this city, which is three, and we pay him $50,000, we're going to save $150,000. Except in this case, because that money is pensionable, when he retires, he's going to collect a higher amount. If he lives, I say if, bless him, I hope he lives, at least, I used 20 years, may he live forever, but I had to use a figure. If he lives 20 years, our city will pay $625,000 just on the increase in his pension. Just on the increase. That isn't his total pension. The only way around this is if he doesn't take a salary, which of course he won't, or if we take the portion, or will, or if we take whatever the dollar amount comes out to, and we do the normal 2% and put it into a money market or 401K of his choice, and that amount is never added to his pension. Adding his increase to his pension would be devastating to us in the long run. Devastating. Not because of him. It isn't him. He just happens to be the one. It could be me sitting there. It could be anybody sitting there. I have to look at it not only in the number of years that he's going to be employed, but after he does retire, and he and his family move on with their lives, we're going through the budget. We have to look at our legacy costs. I've done some checking. This would be the biggest pension we've ever given anybody. I couldn't find one bigger. But even if it's tied as one, I don't think we can fiscally responsibly do this. You can't. And it's the whole thing of adding his salary as city manager to his current salary as police chief, and using that whole amount toward the pension. Okay? That's huge. So between the fringe benefits, technically, the fringe benefits, he could negotiate the next contract that he's going to retire on, and according to this, he gets the raises. Now, I know that won't happen, but I, well, I don't know it won't happen. I know his integrity would never happen, but what if it does? What if something happens, and he has an epiphany one day, and he says, "I'm leaving town, I might as well get what I can." I'm sorry, chief, I'm just using it as an example. That's what he's doing. We're putting him in charge of negotiating the contract for his union that he's been a part of, that he's saying here he wants all future negotiated collective bargaining So those are two things there that...
It could be in the wording.
Everything's in the wording, my dear. Ask our attorney.
Yep.
So...
So those are your two things?
Those, oh, those are major.
Okay.
Major. They have to be in any contract.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
I hope the committee will negotiate in good faith, report back to council, and we'll have the discussion on every item in the contract before we bless it and pass it. Anybody else got any comments on the contract?
Can I ask the city attorney another question?
Yes, go ahead, Mr..
Okay, I still don't believe in negotiating on the open floor. I think you bring the final project and vote on it. Since this is a contract with an existing employee and a new position for that employee, per the charter, I think we're allowed, if employee requests a closed session, could we go in that way, too?
Only if it was a collective bargaining agreement. I didn't bring the Open Meetings Act with me, but my recollection, the limitation was only if it was a collective bargaining agreement, and as far as I know, on this particular specific topic, we're not discussing a collective bargaining agreement.
So, Mr. Cronin, what you're saying, if it's not collective bargaining, that we should not have a closed session?
Correct. May I elucidate a little bit?
I have a copy of the Means Act, you all saw.
Some of the prior, I'll go back just a little bit to the prior discussion. When Mr. McClary was hired, there was a lot of similarity between where Mr. McClary was and the prior city manager, as opposed to the situation that's before the city council this time.
That's true.
So there's a number of different things that are likely to happen here that did not happen the last time. My recollection is, and doing this just from memory, I was tasked with negotiating with Mr. McClary, and the finished product was brought back to the city council. Now, whether there were negotiation sessions in closed session, I don't know. How it was handled by the full city council, I don't know, because I'm not always here. But I do know that I was tasked with talking to Mr. McClary and negotiating. Now, when I say negotiating, there was only a few points. If you look at the existing contract draft, there's a few blanks that had to be filled in. The contract is significantly different now, but the prior contract with Mr. Harvey, there were a few blanks that had to be filled in, changed, and those are what I ended up negotiating with Mr. McClary about. And the finished product was then brought to the city council. I don't know what happened here, but the finished product, after I put together the I don't know what happened here, but the finished product, after I put together the prior form and filled in the blanks, it came back. This is an entirely different contract. And I was very uncomfortable, in all honesty, when Ms. Bettis and I talked about it. I need the direction as to what's being negotiated before I can draft a contract competently. And so my prayer is that the committee will do the negotiating, so we have something to bring back.
May I ask you one question?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Cronin.
Mr. Cronin? Does it give you pause? Does it give you pause that council is entering into negotiations of an employment contract that if passed could violate a law?
Well, you know, if, if I may, if I may expand the question a little bit?
And, and, and this is not an I got you question.
No, no, I'm...
It came to me, honest to God, there's, I have no intention, but it's the, this is so ironic, and that's why I won't take part in the thing, but since you're our attorney and you're sitting here, I would just like your opinion on knowing what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what the end result can be. Does it give you pause?
I'd like to expand the question a little bit.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Pause is a yes or no, and if I may...
No, please, go ahead. I agree.
There was an issue that was brought up, as all the council members, I'm sure, are aware, that was a question asked of the attorney general's office as to whether someone holding a position of city manager and police chief was a problem under the Incompatible Public Offices Act. Okay? I'd like to focus on that for just a moment.
Absolutely.
The Incompatible Public Offices Act is a civil statute. It's not a criminal statute. The only person who is at risk of being in violation of the Incompatible Public Offices Act is the person holding the offices. The appointing authority, the electing members of the electorate, whoever, ends up putting them, hiring authority, they don't have any liability, they don't have any risk, and it's not criminal, it's civil. If someone suspects that there is an incompatibility problem, there's only two persons in the state of Michigan who have any cause of action under the statute. Only two. Not a member of the public, not the city council, the attorney general and the county prosecutor. The attorney general is the chief law enforcement officer of the state. That office carries a fair bit of weight. Setting aside any opinion I've offered, the attorney general issued a letter which basically declined to offer an opinion. I understand it's read differently by different persons, that's always gonna be the case. And it cites different attorney generals' opinions. The attorney general has decided that the attorney general is not gonna get involved in this question, and that's very apparent when the last portion of the letter says you can talk to the county prosecutor about it. Being a practical man and having worked at the county prosecutor's office, I think the chances of prosecutor worthy getting involved in this issue are beyond remote. That leaves the city council with the question of whether the city council decides they want to entertain having someone hold both offices at the same time, without any risk of liability for the city council members, without any risk of criminal prosecution for anyone. Only risk would be to the individual who holds both offices if the city council goes that right. Now, I think the city council knows my opinion on this topic. The question is always going to be, for anyone who's employed by city government, do they have a conflict of interest? Always. That's an individual issue that has to be decided on an individual basis. And there are provisions that could be made if such was the case, happens for city council members, board members, commission members. Everyone in government has to deal with that issue at one point. The process for an elected official is to say something, to raise your hand, and I think I've talked to individual council members about this, to say in a public setting that there's this potential or real conflict of interest, and then the city council can decide if they're gonna say, "Well, on that one, we're gonna let you go ahead and vote, you should vote anyway," or not. With an employee or a department head, my recommendation is that issue is still something that should be dealt with, and it still should be brought to, probably in this case, the city council would be the appropriate entity to understand that issue. The city council's gonna have to decide that issue. It's gonna come back to the city council, no matter what. Attorney general isn't gonna touch this issue. County prosecutor, I think, is not gonna touch this issue. So on the large picture and on the smaller pictures, I think it comes back to the city council.
Okay. And I thank you for that. It makes sense.
Okay.
You're right, we're aware of your opinion. Let me take it one step further. Has your opinion changed?
I don't think you can overlook the impact of what the attorney general has said on this topic. My opinion becomes kind of pale and shallow and meaningless in this context. Attorney general, as I said, and I said on purpose, he's the chief law enforcement officer for the state. He carries a big responsibility and a lot of authority with that title. My opinion is kind of momentless and...
No, I, I understand that, but has it changed?
Um, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I wanna read some comments. I did a little bit of homework on this, and there's a lot of debate on this, and I wanna give my, my two cents on this to the residents. Section 3.03, subsection 2 of the Charter of the City of Garden City says, "The city manager, with the approval of council, may serve as head of any department except when forbidden by this charter or by law." The attorney general's office cited MCL 15.184, section 4, as possible alternative when he declined to issue an opinion. In that section, it clearly states, "The attorney general or prosecuting attorney may apply to a circuit court for injunctive or other appropriate judicial relief or remedy. The attorney general chose not to exercise that option and instead suggested contacting the prosecutor's office." Don't you think the attorney general would have been duty bound to take action if he saw a violation of the law? In the letter, no comments from the floor. That's your last warning, Mr. Wallace. In the letter in which the attorney general's office conveyed their decision not to render an opinion, they cited two previous opinions addressing dual office holding by a police chief. In opinion 6903, the issue at hand was can a township police chief simultaneously serve as a member of the county board of commissioners, an elected position? Under those circumstances, the commissioner holds a voting position that could, in matters of contract or other circumstances, positively or negatively impact the township police department. In this case, the police chief commissioner could find himself on both sides of the table on contractual and budgetary issues. Mr. Murray does not sit on both sides of the table. He is management. He is the police chief, as the city manager remains the same, and his ability to protect, advance, promote the interests of each office remains the same. Mr. Murray does not vote on contracts or matters of substance. That's what council does. He gathers information, researches solutions, and provides information to council. Even in the matter of labor contract with the police department, Mr. Murray gets his marching orders from council, and council votes on the final contract. In opinion 6913, the issue is again, serving as a county commissioner, elected position, with voting power and serving as the police chief. The conflict arises when, as a voting commissioner, a person holding those two offices runs the risk if the township and the city contract with one another on matters affecting the police department. Remember, Mr. Murray does not enter into contracts without authorization from council. Mr. Murray does not have a vote as a county commissioner would have. It is this same opinion that discusses the finding that, in a city of less than twenty-five thousand, this very arrangement we are discussing tonight would be legal. Does the difference of twenty-six hundred people, citizens, really make this office incompatible? The best-known case on this subject in our area in Wayne County is the Wayne County Prosecutor versus Kenny. In this case, an individual was serving as a firefighter and on the council of Woodhaven, elected position. Obviously, this individual had voting power over matters affecting the fire department. As an obvious conflict is evident. In Mr. Murray's case, he takes his orders from city manager and from council. He executes the policies of council as the city manager. Mr. Murray has no ability to vote to give a raise to the police department or vote to approve new equipment for the police department. That power rests with council. Mr. Murray, serving in dual roles, will save this community six figures. He has demonstrated his ability to fulfill the role of city manager since August of 2012. We have not seen any evidence of conflict or inability to protect, advance, promote the interests of each office remains. If this is illegal, why is permissible, permissible to have the city manager serve as Parks and Recreation Director and Director of Human Resources? Why is it permissible to appoint Mr. Murray to the position in August and allow him to remain there even after this debate started? This is an opportunity to save money. We have seen other communities like Inkster, who is currently operating under a consent agreement with the state, select, select an existing department head to also serve as their city manager. Wald Lake made their police chief the city manager in an arrangement that existed for five years. Chief Chip Snyder also served as a town manager without issue. We would have been thrilled if the attorney general had issued a clear-cut opinion on our specific set of circumstances. He did not. And now we must move forward and do what we feel is in the best interest of this community. There's a difference between an elected person and being the police chief versus a management. That's all I have to say. Any other comments? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, generally, I would agree with the points that you made. I feel that the difference between twenty-five thousand and twenty-seven thousand is a very small difference, even if that made in, made it look like there was an issue of incompatibility. I have great faith in the integrity of our city manager, police chief, to avoid any conflicts. And the ultimate guideline for me wasn't the saving of money, although I think that's important. Ultimate guideline for me was what would be best for Garden City. And I supported the hiring of Chief Murray as city manager because I believe in my heart that he has the pulse of this city better than any other individual in this room, and he would be the best choice for Garden City.
Thank you. Anybody else? And I, let me make one more comment to, if it's illegal, what do we do if we hire another city manager when that city manager goes on vacation? Who's in charge of the city? I mean, we've always, past history, appointed a department head to run the city in the absence of the city manager. If you hired a city manager and he died in a sweep, we'd be without a city manager for at least five or six weeks before we get a committee together, send out a newspaper ad. Who's gonna run the city? You have to have a department head. We've done it in the past for months. Mr. Murray's been doing this since last August, and he's made great strides for this city. And we've talked about him. Ford and Mayorman, we can go on. This last week, he got a house on Deering that was, that caught fire a year ago. He got that house bulldozed to, to fight blight in the city. I could go on and on and on. The streetlights that he's working on. There's no learning curve with Mr. Murray. He's been in this city for years. You hire a new city manager, there's gonna be a learning curve. Nobody knows the city better than he does. He's well-respected. In my opinion, it makes sense to move forward, get a contract drafted, and hire Mr. Murray as our full-time city manager. Again, he is not in an elected position. All right, that's all I have.
Mayor?
Ms. Dodge?
Quick question for you, the subject of Chief Murray, on the subject of the committee, is there a timeline?
I don't know how soon you guys can meet, or I mean, we have the draft, you just gotta plug in numbers. Do you guys think you could be ready by May 20th, two weeks from tonight?
It's quite possible.
Why don't we shoot for that? Bring something back to council on May 20th. And if you need more time, well, you need more time, but I mean, let's, let's shoot for that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from council on this matter? Okay, we'll move to item B2, resolution for 40-year anniversary for Pastor Dr. Robert Stombow.
C to C.
Move it to C. Item 3, American Legion Riders Poppy Drive.
C.
C. Gasoline fuel contract award.
C.
Special assessment, Harrison, 2012 construction project.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Ms. Dodge, go ahead.
I'm fine with moving it to C, but on the back, the last two bullet points, we have, that it's gonna be divided into, of course, we don't know the assessment amounts, because Ms. Bettis and her office, her staff hasn't put the whole together. But seven installments, and then the next one is at a 6% rate. Did the, are we following what we have done in all of our past projects, or where did these numbers come from? To Ms. Bettis, this will be.
I, I believe we're asking for council's direction in that regard. If I'm not mistaken, the city manager has given you some of the information in regard to what we have done in the past, and I'm here and, and the city manager is here and prepared to answer questions as we have that discussion. I can tell you, we did 27 and 10 for Maplewood, 1 and 2. And any questions that you have, I'm prepared to answer.
Twenty-seven dollars per...
You mean 27 installments?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, installments, no.
Yeah, I'm talking installments and rate and the percentage.
That is simply what we have done in the past since I've probably been here. It is something that is council's prerogative.
And of course, if anybody pays that early, they save the 6% interest for that period of time.
Certainly. And also, the interest is something as well that, within council's prerogative, however, the ordinance and perhaps the charter indicate that it can be no more than the 6% annual. So that is also something within the discretion of council.
But we don't know what the dollar amount is yet.
No, no. Not until you tell me what the square, you would have to give me prices for me to tell you what that is. I can tell you...
Give you the prices.
The front footage, how much? If, if you want it to be $27 per front footage and $10 per side footage, the way it was in, for example, maybe Woods One, then I could tell you how much that will generate towards the project.
All right, back up.
Okay.
The project costs X number of dollars.
Yes, sir.
We're only gonna assess a small percent of that total construction cost.
That is council's discretion, yes, sir, and...
What is that percent, and what does that come to?
That is up to council.
The total amount of the street work, not sidewalks, the total amount of the street work is eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and seventy-one cents. We have, we have in the past, council, back when days were much, much better, has assessed up to 40% of the project to the citizens. In our recent memory, it has been considerably lower. We have developed a number of scenarios here, plugging in different numbers to give you the percentages. I believe Ms. Bettis has that, to give you an idea of total percentage. Ms. Bettis, what's the, what's the one using the same fee as Maplewood?
So that would bring a total of ninety-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-eleven dollars and forty-eight cents. And I'm sorry, give me the...
It'd bring it to what? What's ninety-two thousand?
That how much would be collected on the assessment?
So we would collect...
What's that percentage?
Ten-point-eight.
Ten-point-eight. So we will, on a eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project, we charge 10.8%, which comes to ninety-two thousand and change. Say ninety-three thousand. Okay. If everything was even in this world, what does that break down per household?
It, of course, varies by household, based on...
I understand, I mean, if you're on a corner, if you've got a bigger lot. If, have we looked at it as if everything was the same, and, and this was just a gray and white world, do we know what it would be per household? Or what it is per square foot?
So, again, this is an estimate based...
I understand.
A larger footage, a frontage household would be approximately twenty-three hundred dollars, twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred, and that's for a larger...
Yeah, with about seven, with about eighty-five frontage and square feet in frontage.
Does that equal to like the... Does that equal to like the 2710 you were talking about?
Yes. And if it was a smaller lot, which the majority of them are, it's approximately, oh, let's say 1,700 if we want to err on the highest.
Okay, so if we go, if we go high, it's 2,300 dollars. If we divide that into seven payments, it comes to 328 dollars and 57 cents per installment payment. An installment payment, it's an annual, so it's once a year. Would this be added to fall or summer?
Generally, we do not add the special assessments to the tax bill.
We don't?
No, we send those out separately.
What time of year does it go out?
And again, this is a discretionary item, but we try to do it when it's not something else done, like December 1st or something like that. But it is a discretionary.
We try to do it in December, you're saying?
So, the last few that we've done, we've done December. They were due December 1st.
It's just based over the holidays. We should be doing it.
Okay.
The winter tax bill isn't due until February. The summer tax bill hasn't, has been long gone. The winter tax bill is really small in the first place, comparatively speaking. And so, we just thought that was a good time, but it's before the Christmas holiday, it gets rolling.
Well, I know we've used what you've said. We've gone up to 10 installments in the past. 10 installments for a large lot would be 230 dollars.
230 cents?
Yep. It would be 19 dollars a month if they had to put money in the cookie jar.
That doesn't include interest, so.
And that's with the interest or without?
No.
No, that's without interest, but 6%.
All right, we've gone from 40% to 10%.
I think we need to stay near what we did with the Maplewood residents.
I do, too.
27 dollars per frontage foot. So if they had a 50-foot lot, 27 times 50. What did we do for the sideage?
10.
What was it?
10 dollars.
10 dollars, if they lived on the corner for the side, and then 27 for the frontage?
Yes.
My recommendation, council, is that we do the same thing we did for the Maplewood residents, to be fair.
It's a fair amount.
Well, to be fair, if we used to charge them 40%, and we're charging them 10.2, now, that's pretty fair, if you ask me.
Is that 2,300?
I wish I could go back.
Was that 2,300 figured on 27 dollars a square foot?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, sir. So I'm looking, I'm just picking one at random. It's 85 feet in, in frontage, and it's 2395, I'm sorry, 2295.
2295 dollars.
Correct, sir.
When did we charge 40% to which project?
It's been a long time.
I think it's worth saying that the residents have paid for most of this project with the gasoline tax every time they fill up their car. This project was done with Act 51 money, so in a sense.
We're replacing that money.
Well, I, I don't mind the 27-dollar square footage. The math comes out to where it should not be a heartache, and I know there's someone at home saying right now, throwing something at the TV. It is a figure council's have used successfully in the past. They can pay it upfront, although I was at every meeting the citizens had with Mr. Barms. I didn't miss a one. There were two big issues. Number one, they wanted to park on both sides, which they got. Number two was, they wanted to take as long as they could to make, to make the payments because of issues. The economy isn't back right. A lot of people have retired. I would like to extend the number of payments. If they want to avoid the 6% charge, of course, we'll take their money. And for those that can afford it, they, there was comments in the crowd, they're just going to pay it off. But I remember several young ladies who, one was working two jobs and had to use vacation time to come to Jack's meetings, and she did it. And she was very, very upset. She loves her house, she loves Garden City. She needed the road paved, but it would really hurt her bad. So, I would like to go to 10 payments, if we've done that before. And it'll, it'll reduce it down.
Yeah, Ms. Lynch?
Ms. Bettis, when would the first payment come due? Because I know it wouldn't be this year, correct?
Um.
It usually isn't during.
It usually isn't because we would have done it by now. So it would have kind of been this year. Because the project was actually last year. So, yes, it will be this year.
Okay.
Unless you don't want it to be.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with 10 payments.
And I just did want to just mention, there is a program through the state of Michigan where you can defer your special assessments if you have a poverty issue, just FYI for the public.
Yeah, and that was another thing. Anybody out there, if you have a poverty issue, contact, they can contact us for assistance.
I can give them the form or direct.
We'll give them the form or the website to contact for deferment, but I think if we can go 10, we need to go 10. I'm okay with that.
The only thing with that, though, is.
Can I get my question answered, Ms. Bettis? The 40%, when did we charge that?
I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. It looks like, it's been a while, I can tell you that.
Early 90s, late 80s.
Yeah, it's, it's been before my time.
Before any of us, okay.
Mayor, the only thing about that is, I mean, I don't want citizens to pay too much either, but if we're charging 40% 20 years ago, we're charging 10% now, do you know how many fewer projects we're going to be doing? Even if we charged 15%, you know, we're charging 6% interest. So the least, the least they pay, the least projects will be done. Okay? Does everybody understand that?
So is everybody in agreement with the 10 payments?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So we just got to plug in the numbers now, right?
Yes, sir.
Frontage and sideage, so.
2710.
You guys like 2710 for the front?
10.
10 for the side? Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
And then 10 and 6.
Okay.
Right?
10 and 6?
We're staying at 6%.
10.
6%. 10 for sideage and 27, was it changed, some change on that, or no?
No.
No.
27 for frontage. All right, move that to C?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, number six, Bach Lathers 2013 reconstruction project. This is just a call for a public hearing on May 20th. Council, several public hearings in our package today, and some of them were for May 13th, and they didn't realize that was a, that's just a budget night. So, we had to make some corrections. So this one would actually be calling for a public hearing on May 20th at 6:55 PM.
No problem.
Okay, move to C. Item seven, bid award for the Civic Ice Arena Cooling Tower.
I've got some questions on this one.
Mr. Plemm, you're probably going to be needed at the podium.
Okay. You want us to award it to Tech Mechanical. Of the five that bid, I'm not going to talk about Control Temp or Miller Bolt or CSM. Those three are completely out in, in my book. It's between Service Refrigeration and Tech Mechanical. This is where my questions were. Okay. Under additional fees, under Tech Mechanical, additional refrigerant replacement of valves, cost not specified. So that's going to be extra for us. And they did not give us any idea of what those costs would be. And this is valves that they're going to put on as they put the cooling tower in. Is that what?
Let me explain that a little further.
Yeah, that confused me.
In talking with the owner, Mike Curry of the company, who is here tonight, answering any further questions that I might not be able to answer. The valves inside the compressor room, original valves dated back probably to the original installation of the refrigeration system and the cooling tower, the existing cooler, cooling tower itself. When the valves will be isolated to isolate all the refrigerant so they can swap the old unit for the new unit, assuming there's no problems, there won't, no replacement of the valves will be needed. If there are problems, that might be an added-on cost that is not included in the bid because we're not asking for new valves. We did not write it in the bid specs for them to pay for new valves. It's one of those, we hope it isn't an issue, but it could be an issue. It's a 35-year-old piece of equipment. I believe the compressors are close to 40 years. It's one of those things that, to be honest with you, I'm glad it was mentioned. I mentioned it to Ecton City Manager Murray as well, that that could potentially be an issue. We don't anticipate it at this point until they get in there, but it's something for discussion purposes that could, could come up. Mike, do you mind coming up?
What is the approximate cost of those? Because we're taking some of this out of our contingency, and then, of course, the Parks Grant, and this, it could be very costly. I don't know. It could be a $35 park. I don't know.
Correct. I'm going to let Mr. Curry, Mr. Curry, explain what potentially could, we could be looking at if that does become an issue for us, or what that cost might be.
The valves, we did, just closed the valves in order to remove the cooling tower. If the valves don't hold, that means we can't get the refrigerant out and replace the tower. I really don't think there's going to be a problem. Those valves are inside the refrigeration system, which is a very clean system, and they should shut off very well. And again, they weren't requested on the bid spec, so we didn't put a number on. If they don't hold, you know, a Control Temp at a price on the $2,600, that would be the price of the valves, but we would have to remove all the refrigerant from the entire system. And just guessing at that, you're probably looking at another, you know, $3,000 to $5,000 to remove all the refrigerant if those valves don't hold.
Okay, so that's my other question. Additional refrigerant, you're, you're just transferring what is already in the tower to the new tower?
Exactly.
Okay.
We're going to take it out, store it in the cylinders, and put it right back in.
Okay. And if the valves don't hold, that means we lose some, and that's where an additional cost comes.
If the valves don't hold, you won't lose any refrigerant. Well, no, you won't, because when we try to pull the refrigerant out, we'll realize the valves aren't holding. That refrigerant will be stored, because you can't let the refrigerant out in the atmosphere anyway. So that refrigerant will be stored. And once we realize the valves aren't holding, we'll take out all the refrigerant, replace the valves, and put it all back in.
Okay. I'm going to bounce back and forth because the service ice under, the Service under additional fees, they didn't specify. So does that mean there would be no additional fees, or there could be hidden fees there?
In reference to Service, are you asking if Service would, what their cost would be potentially?
Well, I'm not sure how you worded the, you know, what the specs that you sent out. So, when they have additional fees not specified, do they mean this, there could be hidden fees all over the place, or no, there's not going to be any additional?
The RFP was very specific. We asked for, and you'll bear with me, I'm just going to dig it up. Outside of the obvious purchase, purchase of the new condenser tower, the stand, as well as the condenser itself, we asked for, in the RFP, we asked for warranty information. We asked for how they're going to store the R22, the refrigerant. We asked for a list of references. We asked for their timeframe, because it had to be, the work had to be completed during the time the Ice Arena shut down in the summer. Insurance, and then they had to put down a, I believe it was a 5% bid bond. So anything listed outside of that, we're assuming, if they didn't say it was an additional charge, it's going to be either covered. And if they didn't specify it, then, you know, we're going to go with what the best bid was, and Tech Mechanical gave the best bid.
Okay. Then we get down, let's get down to the warranty. Okay, condenser, we've got Tech Mechanical 18 months versus Service at one year. The tower stand, this one confused me because the tower and the tower stand are completely different, correct? And you have a 10-year warranty on the tower stand as compared to, it looks like the rest are like a year. Do tower stands seem to break over the, the actual tower itself?
What the tower stand is, is just an angle iron structure to hold the tower up in here. And what we're going to be using is a hot-dip galvanized stand. So we'll, we'll construct the whole stand, weld it all together, and then we take it to a facility where they dip it in, zing. And the whole thing, all the welds are, and then get all galvanized. And by doing it that method, it'll last you, the one out there now, I think it's just painted, and it's lasted a long time. But if we hot-dip galvanized, it'll, it'll last a long time.
So the tower itself doesn't have a warranty? It's just the tower stand, right?
Just the tower stand, yes.
The condenser itself has an 18-month warranty.
Right. Okay, miscellaneous parts for Service versus labor/service calls, two years. Future service calls, one year. Pump and VFD, one year. Okay, labor and service calls, two years. That means if Dan, under yours, if Dan has any problems, he can call you, you come out, no charge. Right? Pump and VFD, one year. The pump to, pump the refrigerant into the system, is that the pump?
No, this is a water pump that pumps the water in and out of the tower.
Okay. And what is a VFD?
VFD is a variable frequency drive. It's a speed control for the tower fan.
It switches from low to high versus on the load for the condenser?
Okay, now we go, and this is going to be for Dan. Under Service, miscellaneous parts, would that, would the pump and the VFD and other things like that fall under miscellaneous parts?
I don't know. They didn't specify in their bid.
Okay, and future service calls, is that like labor and service calls, or just service?
Service, under the Service bid, they specified as future service calls, one year. So if I call, my assumption in the bid is if I call Service to come out and service X issue, that call, that transportation fee, whatever they lump together, is free. But if they service it, depending on what it is they're there to service, if it's warranted under one of the specified items, it would honor that year. If it's a part that's not listed under the warranty, then I might have to pay for that part.
Okay. And under Tech Mechanical, no matter what, if it's the tower, even if it doesn't have the warranty, for that two years, labor and service calls are free. Unless it's something that's in our compressor room.
Right, it's something other than.
Something other than the tower.
The equipment, the new equipment that we're installing, you'll get the manufacturer's warranty, which is the 18 months and one year on the pump and the VFD. We'll cover the labor for two years, so it happens in the second year.
So you're saying the tower fan, the gearbox, be 18 months?
Yeah.
Is this a Marley, a Baltair?
It's Baltimore Air.
Baltimore Air, okay.
No, the tower fan would be a year. The condenser is 18 months, right?
The condenser is a unit that involves the fan, so it's part of that.
Okay, then we go down to storage method. What is the difference between these two storage methods? I have no clue. One is stored in 125-pound cylinder, cylinders, stored for owner's use with coordination with rig management. And then Tech Mechanical, stored in portable recovery tanks, two to three days, will move off-site if requested by management. What's the difference between those two? I have no clue.
On the Service quote, they specify the size of their cylinders being 125 pounds. I don't know what the size of the storage containers.
We'll probably use the same size.
So it's basically the same thing, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just discuss size, that's all.
Okay. And then, looking at how the bids came in, you had, CSM Mechanical was the lowest, but it, it just, they didn't, there's too much that they just left off, didn't specify, and you can, you can just see dollar signs there. Of course, the top two, Control Temp and Miller Bolt, those two are way too expensive, which brings us to Tech Mechanical, which comes in at 42,492, and Service Refrigeration at 38,148. Looking at the references, we've got Wyndock Yak, Novi Ice, Ferris State Arena, Arctic Arenas, Lakeland Try, and Dayton Riverside. The only one I haven't been in is Dayton Riverside. They're on for Service. And then for Tech Mechanical, we've got North Park Towers, Michigan Milk Producers Association, and Shaw Management. Now, and this would be a question for Dan. I know you've, I know you've been servicing everything that we have, but why are you choosing Tech Mechanical at 42 over Service at 38 when Service has all the experience with the different arenas, and they come in a little bit cheaper here?
I have personal, I, I, since. I have personal, since working for the city the last seven years this October, I've worked with both companies. We have our dehumidifier in the ice arena was purchased from Service. My experience in dealing with the company has been hit and miss. We've had some good interactings, we've had some shaky, not-so-good interactings. Tech Mechanical's been the heating and cooling contractor in the city for, best to my knowledge, ten-plus years. We've had exceptional service. We've had a technician that services our building once a month. He's been the same technician that's been dispatched to the building for the last ten-plus years. We have a great working relationship. I think they have a good intimate knowledge of the building. That's probably the number-one factor. And for our building, you need an intimate knowledge of the building. All our major components are dated forty-plus years, or pretty close to forty years. I feel very comfortable coming to council and not recommending the lowest bidder, because I feel that this is the best bid.
Well, no, the lowest bidder's out of the picture. They're out of the picture.
Correct, correct.
It's the second lowest bidder.
But...
So it's basically based on, it's not based on, of course, you're looking at the specs that they're, but you're also looking at, since they service us already for a dehumidifier, the service and the quality of service that we receive already.
It's been a...
Projects, we did put two towers out, like the Brick Park Towers with the seven-hundred-ton cooling tower that was nineteen stories on top of a building. So it's substantial.
I figured they all were towers. I mean, it'd be silly to put them in there for something else, you know?
Yeah. Those three things I specified there, that are cooling towers.
And I will reference to the list of references for Service, the number of ice arenas that they service. Not one of them, and part of their bid, was an installation of a cooling tower.
Okay.
Mr. Fetter?
Yeah, I don't have a question of the process, but, you know, I'm normally a pretty big supporter of you, Dan, but, man, you ticked me off now. When we got this grant money, when we got this money back from the county, I didn't want the state park, skate park, everybody knows that. And it's coming out to what I said. Our residents aren't using it, there's gang graffiti on it. There's shoes hanging from the wire, but besides that, there are kids using it. The money should've went to GCYA. We should've redone our baseball fields, the netting and all that. But I lost, I understand. I was the only one against it. But, chief, this is what, we held Mr. Barnes' feet to the fire, and he came through on staying in budget. The skate park ballooned by almost twenty thousand dollars, and this was gonna be covered. This was the first thing Dan brought up when we got that money, was this cooling tower, before the skate park. We asked then, yes, he did, he brought it to us then, and Diane sat there and said they wanted to split it off and pay part of the money toward it. I was for that, because it's support in the ice arena. Here we go again. This was gonna be paid for by the money we paid in taxes to the county that came back to us, and it's biting us in the butt. I don't care if it's Rhodes, or if it's Dan with an ice tower. If it wasn't for the ice arena, I'd vote against it. I'm a believer in the ice arena. It's gonna cost us, right now, forty-two hundred dollars. We don't have it, and it can go up. Trust me, it's going up. The idea that we might have to replace a valve, for crying out loud, Dan sat here and said they're twenty-some years old. It just, it has to stop. We have to get, from now on, when money comes in and we have it, we want every stone under turned over. I don't like this coming back. We can't stay in budget with anything around here. Jack can now. He did a beautiful job, and on time. But I know it's a skate tower, I know it's four thousand dollars, but my nightmares are coming true. And it's costing us money. It cost us money off the set because it overran its budget. It's causing, it's a domino effect. Other things are starting to fall now. That's all I have.
Ms. Lynch?
Just curious, have we heard from Commissioner LeBlanc as far as any money that might possibly come to us this year from the Parks Village money?
We had a lunch meeting with Commissioner LeBlanc, myself and Monica Fulton, about two weeks ago, and the Chair of the Parks Commission, and talked about future allotments from the County Village. And his recommendation was to submit projects. And we talked a little bit about the locker room expansion through the Michigan DNR Grant. He was in support of that project, and possibly if Garden City's allotment could fund a second locker room so we could build two as opposed to one. And I think it was more of a wait-and-see conclusion of the meeting. But he is definitely an advocate of, if you have something in writing ready to go, send it his way.
Okay. Thank you.
Council, see?
See.
Let's see, all right. Item eight, construction contract for emergency sewer replacement for Dawson Avenue.
I believe it needs to go to C.
Yeah, that we've talked about.
C? Okay, we'll want to see. Number nine, construction engineering for Dawson?
C.
C? Item ten, proposed text amendment permitted uses in structure in the CEBD kennels. We're calling for a public hearing for May twentieth at six fifty-three PM.
Six fifty-six.
No, that's, remember I told you we had to redo the times?
Okay.
So this one will be for six fifty-three PM on May twentieth.
That was just the date. Okay, if I can ask, normally when we get proposed text amendments, where they're introducing, I mean, this is gonna be for a doggy daycare. I don't have a problem with a doggy daycare. Special land use, normally we get a little more than minutes. It actually tells us where it is. I mean, I had to call the chief up today, and I said, okay, fine, where is this? I mean, because you don't wanna have a doggy daycare, I guess, in the same room as, with served food, you know?
Right.
I think Mr. May is here.
Well, I mean...
It's right across the street where we had the fire.
Yeah, the chief actually answered this one, but normally we get it in our packet. It comes, you know, it's not the planning commission that sends it, it's our consultants who normally put it together and give it to the chief, who then gives it to us. And it was missing, and it's, you know, I shouldn't have had to call the chief and ask him, okay, where is this located?
Why don't I have Sarah come up and enlighten everybody?
And that's gonna be on the second one also, the dry cleaners. I mean, it's...
Yes, you can stay up there and answer both.
Great, yeah. It's missing information to us.
Start with the doggy daycare.
I'm thinking what, good evening. I'm thinking what is missing is maybe a more nuanced explanation and background, because what we're actually asking you to consider is not the zoning for just one particular property, but the entire central business district. So the question is, and the recommendation made by the planning commission is, is doggy daycare an appropriate use in the central business district? So it's not a rezoning, it's a text amendment to say, do we think that under certain circumstances, doggy daycares are appropriate for the central business district?
And did the DDA take part in these discussions?
Yes. I think it has been recommended by the DDA.
I don't know. Because we have nothing, we have nothing here. I get the planning commission minutes, and that's basically it.
You know, and also, I think, moving forward, I think maybe we're under the impression that in the packet for the public hearing, we give the background information. So if you want it all in the first meeting?
We normally did it all upfront, yes, because, you know, it might be something that we all say, no, we're not having a public hearing on this, this isn't going forward.
Let it drop.
Yeah, we need to know, you know, it's, we need to know.
Got it.
Anybody else on this matter? C?
That one goes to C.
Okay, then the next one is alley vacation?
No, it's gonna be for the...
I'm sorry.
C2 Community Business District. Again, same thing on this one, you know, and the chief couldn't answer my questions on this. It's zoning text amendment for laundries and dry cleaning establishments with coin-operated machines. First of all, was this, is this something that is going to be, you want it to be completely throughout the city in the C2 districts?
Correct.
Is this for a specific person that's coming into town?
Well, it would benefit all property owners, you know, who could then consider renting existing space or developing new coin-operated laundry or dry cleaning facility. The reason this came up is that there are, I think, at least more than one vacant laundry or dry cleaning facilities. And one down on Cherry Hill has been vacant for longer than the ordinance allows us to say it's a, you know, a non-conforming years that can move in because there was less than ninety days interruption, or six months interruption of use. So upon examining the fact that there were existing vacant spaces that had been improved, you know, the interior had been improved for that use, we thought it may be appropriate to, you know, consider doing a text amendment so that future coin-operated laundromats and dry cleaners could move in without, you know, rezoning property. Basically, your ordinance made, your ordinance in nineteen ninety-one made existing businesses non-conforming, and we're thinking that might be time to look at it and say, we think that they're okay and clean enough to be in the C2 district.
Ms. Lynch?
I'm with Mrs. Dodge. Narrative would've been nice on this. There wasn't even any paragraph or whatsoever.
Yeah, it's just...
Because they're both great ideas.
Right.
It's just narrative to us so that we understand what's going on.
Because if a resident had asked me, if they came in and got this information and asked me, I couldn't answer any of the questions. I couldn't say, gee, it's on Cherry Hill, gee, it's the building in the DDA area that had the fire. I couldn't say any of that.
Sure.
And I think it's only one for the laundromats. I think we've only got one vacant, the one on Cherry Hill.
Okay, I was one, okay. Yeah, you're right. Because the one on Warren isn't there.
Right. So there's no other way to handle it. Now, since the individual customer, they're the ones that brought this to us, or we discovered it because the customer, this individual wanted to put something in there?
The direct, I believe that the, do you wanna take a picture?
Fred May from the planning commission?
We were approached to make this text amendment because the existing property owner of this particular building over on Cherry Hill had a laundromat there.
For years.
And it was closed for quite a while. And in order to reopen it again, he would have to go through the entire special land use process. And we felt that it was too difficult a process to make him go through to open this type of business in an area that's already zoned for it. So rather than having it as special land use, we thought it would be more appropriate to make it a permitted use in those areas where it's already zoned for.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
And again, you know, the point is that it wouldn't be a benefit to just that one property owner, that we think we're writing a, perhaps, you know, injustice that was accidentally written into the zoning ordinance. Maybe not an injustice, but that we think dry cleaning and laundry has become a cleaner use, and that there may not be the same types of impacts that there were in the past.
Okay, so this is calling for a public hearing on May twentieth at six fifty-four PM. Six fifty-four. Move that to C, council?
Yes.
Okay, item twelve, alley vacation, northwest corner of Ford and Henry Rough. My understanding, this is where Subway wants to move?
Now, this had all the information we needed, so thank you.
Okay. No questions?
No.
Okay, great.
So this is calling for a public hearing on this matter, May twentieth at six fifty-two PM. C?
C, six fifty-two.
And item thirteen, scheduled public hearing for annual CDBG application to Wayne County for two thousand thirteen.
Or in Sarah.
Okay, thank you for finally getting this to us. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay, question for you. I know that we can change our proposed projects at any point in time.
Sure.
If it's a different type of use.
Yep.
Normally, we've been pretty broad in our language so that we didn't have to go through that change of a process. But as you know, there might be monies that will be coming up for bid for all the communities, and we, as a council, had talked about the bathrooms over at City Park. If we could get some of that money combined with our CBD money, it might be shovel-ready and enough money.
Yep.
So I would like to see either this language opened up wide enough so that it's just a brick-and-mortar project with not specifying that it's gonna be specifically at City Hall. I mean, if the other falls through, then we can do that.
Right. A couple of...
Unless the county's changing their mind on how we're doing things again.
Well, when we submit an application, they do ask for project location and a map and, you know, in pinpointing a location. But the project that you're discussing, we're actually working with Hennessy to draw up some plans and reprogram some prior-year funding, actually the leftover demolition funding from the cabin. So that will be coming soon, once we have those, really a dollar estimate on how much that project will be. So that would be reprogramming, I think it was two thousand eleven.
Okay, and we're looking at two thousand thirteen monies here.
Yep.
Two thousand twelve monies, we've got that spent down?
I believe that those projects are primarily housing rehab, planning, and admin. So as you know, I'm consistently working through the housing rehab.
Okay. Still, we don't know, because, again, if that money comes up for bid, which we're planning on it coming up for bid.
Right.
It might be a little bit more, it might be a little bit less, depend upon the other communities. But it's for a shovel-ready project. I still would like to see the language changed a little so that it is a little more broad.
Okay.
So that if we do, if we do, if we can reprogram the eleven money and add it to this.
Yep.
Plus, we're awarded anymore and can get those bathrooms at City Park done. You know, it's, I look at the architectural barriers here at City Hall. We do have the back doors that we just put in with the ramp going up. The front doesn't have them.
Right.
Absolutely right. And the front could use them, but we do have access through the back. I mean, if I were to do architectural barriers anywhere, I'd do it at the police department, because their doors, somebody in a wheelchair, yeah, they can get up to the door, but getting the door open is like, okay, hello, you know, bang on the door and hope somebody answers.
So maybe the approach is removal of, because we have to...
Once we have the public hearing, Dave, it goes to the county. So we have to have everything straight before we do this.
And especially with these ADA removal of architectural barriers projects, they do have an added level of review on the project, just because they feel that sometimes HUD feels that communities misappropriate those spots and are just doing general maintenance on buildings, so...
We never have.
Right. And we, so the county does require, you know, very specific information when we're doing those projects. So I think the approach, like you're suggesting, Council woman Dodge, is to say removal of architectural barriers at city facilities?
Yes.
And I can, you know, just, in the application, I can just make a map that shows the, you know, the police department, you know, spill it complex, and City Park, and just say that will work with them once we have the plans in place.
Okay, once you know the dollar amount from Hennessy, monies are gonna be coming up for bid, I think probably late June, early July.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe latest beginning of August. We don't plan on moving forward on these immediately, because we've got our twenty-twelve monies, too.
Right, we won't have our, I mean, the contract doesn't get our, the county doesn't get our contracts back until, normally, the end of the year anyways.
Yeah, so if we need to change this, depending on how things work with the bathroom and the price, we can.
Yep.
But we'd have to go through the public hearing process again.
Yep, once their action plan has been approved by HUD, we would have to go through the public hearing process.
Okay.
And that's, that's sometime in June, July.
Okay. So we're changing that to city facilities?
Yeah.
All right. And if everybody notices, our amount has greatly decreased.
Yep, so-
I think it was by like thirteen percent, something like that.
Actually, this is a reduction of five percent from last year, but also what they've removed completely, I'm sure as you noticed by the strikeout-
The county.
Is the funding that they used to chip in to housing rehabilitation, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we get our citywide housing rehab, but the countywide is that-
It would always be about thirty thousand. So this is, this is about forty thousand dollars less than last year.
It might be less than two.
And they're also taking more money for administration, so your, your share of administration has reduced.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Dodge?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, this is calling for a public hearing for May twentieth at six fifty P.M. Move it to see?
Yes.
Okay. Number fourteen, state bid procedure for the purchase of computers server. Ms. Bettis, you want to speak on this?
I'm sure. Last meeting, council approved the purchase of a new financial, comprehensive financial package and the hardware that's going to be involved in that. This is simply that, it doesn't have any additional cost. This is just a part of the cost that I provided you on that last meeting, and, but because it's eight thousand dollars or more, you just need to approve it.
So we've already approved the, I think it was a hundred eighty-one thousand, right?
You approved the entire package?
And this is part of that hundred eighty-one thousand?
But this is just for the specific purchase.
Okay. See?
Yeah, can I ask Ms. Bettis one question?
Of course.
Okay, in your, in your narrative, I understand this one, and it's no additional cost, but you said software will require replacing or upgrading many of the City Hall computers.
Yes, I believe in the previous package, we said sixteen.
And that's all, it's all incorporated in the total package cost?
Yes. However, just FYI, and this is not a promise, but you remember Mrs. Lynch insisted that we get the Amex card and that it had reward points?
Right.
And so it's very possible that I may be able to offset the cost of those PCs-
Still working profit.
With those points.
That would be nice.
We have a huge number of points, and all I have to do is find, make sure I have the right equipment, but some of it will be offset by that, so that'll reduce the cost that I gave you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, see?
Good card.
Excuse me. Item fifteen, Plant Moran Professional Services. This is the water audit.
Does this have everything you wanted on it, Dave?
Yeah, from what I can tell, I mean- Yeah, this, this is, this is fine.
That's what you're looking for, right?
No, what, what I was looking for was a complete detail of everything for the last three to five years. That's what I wanted.
So all of this, but going back three years, right?
This is going back three years, which is fine. The three years is fine. You know, we were speaking to the representative from Plant Moran that night, and I tried to explain to him what I wanted, not having any training in accounting practices, and he did his best to explain to me what he thought I was talking about, so, yes, to that point, I walked out of there feeling good that what I was, what I was looking for will be addressed with this.
Will be, you say?
Which should be.
What, what, I mean, is there something more than that?
Well, no, see, what happened was-
Because this looks like it's only for the twenty-twelve.
That's what I was just thinking.
So you want it, we need to expand it to be ten, eleven, and twelve.
Yeah, oh, no, I, I asked, I thought you said it's for three years. I said three to five, but at least three.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I'm under the same understanding. This is only for one year.
Yeah, that's what I'm reading.
And if one year isn't what you want?
No.
I mean, they're looking at eight thousand dollars not to exceed for one year. So if we're looking for three years, I, would it be fair to say almost triple?
Well, we need to ask them.
Exactly.
We need to ask them.
But I mean, I've never said anything but that.
Yeah.
Even that night, I said that.
You were saying three years, right?
Three to five, but three would be fine.
So we can't do anything with this?
So we'll leave this in B until we-
So, and have Ms. Bettis go back to Plant Moran and say, okay, give us a price, we're doing this, but expand it to ten, eleven, and twelve, right?
But this will suffice as long as it goes back a few years, right?
But everything else is correct up here?
As far as I can tell, from what I remember, yes. It looks fine. I'd like to, I'd like to have them out one more time just to go over.
I think they are when we do the water budget.
Plant Moran plants to be at the May thirteenth meeting-
Next month.
Water and sewer rates.
Okay. And we'll go over what the audit, what we talked about that night is going to entail.
Okay.
Sure.
Is that okay? I mean-
Yeah, good. So we'll leave this in B.
I think he did his best to articulate what he thought of this story.
I, I think, I think he did too, and I read it a couple of times. It didn't, it's, the year two thousand twelve hit me a stretch, but it didn't register. So that's, that's my fault.
Okay, so this is staying in B then?
Yes.
If we made a mistake with that, we need to go over it with them one more time, and we want to check on rates too.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I did contact the state since it was mentioned at a meeting that the state would come in and do this for free. The state won't come in and do it for free. They'll come in and do it for ninety-nine dollars an hour, which for eighty hours worth of work would come, obviously, pretty close to the eight thousand that Plant Moran was initially suggesting here. But they did say, no, they do not. It would take a very unique set of circumstances, an unusual for them to come in and do it for free. That was, I called one of the names that was provided to me by Mr. Wallace.
Okay, we'll leave this in B. And we'll move on to item sixteen, secondary irrigation meter policy.
No. Ms. Bettis, did, remember, we asked you to look at, is there a way that you could do a flat fee or if we do secondary? Did you, did you try to run that or try to do that? I think we said based off of, what was it, five hundred homes?
I'm sorry, no, ma'am, I didn't. I thought the question was how it would be spread across the board, what would be the average increase to-
No, you answered that verbally.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but it was, is there another way that we could look at this with the second meter having a flat fee and base it on five hundred homes? That's what-
I'm sorry, then, no, ma'am, I did not do that.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see it here. I thought, maybe she's, maybe she's going to verbalize that.
Sorry.
So this needs to stay in B?
Yeah.
We're going to leave it in B?
Yeah.
And just to make sure I understand your question, you want to know if five hundred people decided to get a second meter, what would be the average cost to those people?
Yeah, doing a flat fee so that we're not increasing it to other-
Everybody else.
Okay. I'll come up with something. I apologize.
It's just looking at it in a different way, so, you know, you can still accommodate the residents that want it-
Okay.
If it's cost-effective without adversely, you know, increasing the cost to their neighbors.
So you're looking for a flat fee that does not affect other people, other than the users?
Right. And, and let's see, you know, where that weighs, because they are outlandish, the bills, they, they are outlandish. But a couple of things that you and the chief have caught, I think, might bring some of those prices down a little bit.
So let me just talk this through a little bit, just thinking it through, and you guys correct me if I'm misunderstanding something. But if the additional cost of that was, so what that would bring is that basically the second users would be paying the wholesale cost.
Paying what?
The wholesale cost-
Yes.
Of the sewer treatment.
At a flat fee?
At a flat fee, at a approximated flat fee, yes. So, right, because if you don't want it to affect the rest of the consumers, then you're just taking all of your additional costs.
And we just said, gave you a number of five hundred.
Yep, okay.
Assume that five hundred people are using it.
Regardless, just so, so I understand, we still have to pay to send that, that water back?
Yes.
If a thousand gallons comes in-
A thousand gallons we charge.
So somebody that's watering their lawn, the neighbors are going to be paying for, for that thousand gallons going back, right?
One way or the other, yes.
Yeah, that's why I won't be able to support. I, I would hope that we can, I would hope that we could lower the water rates and the sewer rates and, and attack it that way to give the Garden City residents a better, better water and sewer rates going forward. But this second meter, and I understand, I like watering my lawn too, but if the county's going to charge us to clean up that water, and, and you're going to have residents fill up their swimming pools when they get that second meter. Somebody's got a twelve thousand gallon pool, could fill up that pool and, using the second meter, it's supposed to be for irrigation, some of them will hook up to their washing machines, some will wash their cars in the driveway, and all the neighbors are going to be paying for that water to go back, to be cleaned. So for that reason, I can't support the secondary meters. But I do support us going forward and lowering our water rates and our sewer rates for our residents.
I'm for, I'm for lowering those, I've always been for that, but let's look at, if we can come up with a flat fee that's fair to those that want the second meter, no matter how they use it, and fair to the neighbors around them.
But the water going through that meter is still going to be charged to the other residents to go back to Wayne County to get, to get cleaned up.
Well, let's see what else comes up.
I thought we were going to have a separate fee for that.
Maybe at the wholesale price.
There's still going to be a charge. There's still going to be a charge to the neighbors.
Not necessarily.
No, not necessarily.
That's what I'd like to see, but-
Yeah, that's what we're-
My understanding, there's still going to be a charge, correct?
So with this as it is, yes.
What Ms. Dodge just asked me, she's saying, make it so there isn't a charge-
Great.
To the people. And I can do that, the way we originally talked about it.
Make it so there is a charge to the people not using it.
I'm sorry, what?
Make it a charge for the people that are going to use this, not so the other people don't have it.
Hang on a minute. So I understand this, and so, resident, thousand gallons comes through the meter in Garden City, okay? How, how can you make it where there's no charge for a thousand going back to get cleaned? We gotta, we gotta pay that.
Yes, we definitely would have to pay that no matter what. And I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that Mrs. Dodge is asking that we offset that charge, which you're right, it is going to be a charge back to, by an assessment to those users.
The flat fee.
Yes. To the second meter users.
Yeah, because if we did it just like it's here right now-
That's not going to work. I mean, what if I put twenty thousand gallons through my meter? I'd gladly pay that little flat fee. I'll fill up my pool.
Let her work the numbers.
That's what, that's what I'm getting at. I get where you're going, a flat fee, but it's, it's gallons in and gallons out. How can you put a flat fee on that?
You're correct, it would be an estimate.
I'm asking her to, I'm asking her to work the numbers, to see if there's another way to look at this.
The bottom line, gallons in is gallons going back that we have to pay. A flat fee is not going to cover that. You're going to be asking the other residents to pay for that water. I will not support.
Well, it's not gallons, gallons in were charged at the sewage, it's not gallons going out that were charged.
Gallons that come through the meter-
Consumption and, and water.
Yep.
equals consumption and sewage.
And consumption and sewage going back, so I, I won't be able to support that.
Well, I think the rest of us want to look at what the cost would be.
I only got, you know, I'm only one of seven, but I'm just telling you, you know, what my thoughts is.
All right, also, Mayor, by the way, I don't think anybody addressed what I brought up a few weeks ago. Back a few years ago, we put a charge on the water for the, the system that we're going to have per jug Fikens, the containment.
I don't remember us doing that.
I don't either.
I thought, we definitely discussed it, I thought we did. Put money away, I think we must have borrowed it, we did. All right, let's forget putting the money away, get the money back into where it needs to go. We don't need to do that anymore. I can't see, go ahead, tell them we owe them a hundred million dollars.
And you did.
We're going to go out of business. I mean, so why, why should we pay this petty fee that we're paying? Let the people keep their money.
If we got to do that retention down the road, we can sell bonds. I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Let's use that money to lower the water rates-
Exactly.
And the sewer rates, and not have to do the second meter thing, and give people better rates for everybody.
We certainly heard, Council, when you said that, and because we thought we wanted to discuss this at the thirteenth meeting, we are prepared to do so.
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
I'm for lowering the rates and not lowering the second meter.
Lower the rates.
All right. We will move on to the C agenda. The first one up is C2, resolution, resolution, forty-year anniversary.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to approve the attached resolution recognizing Pastor Dr. Roger Strombaugh's fortieth anniversary and retirement on May nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, from the United Baptist Church in Garden City.
Support.
Would you like to read the resolution, Ms. Lynch?
Yes, please. Resolution of recognition, City of Garden City, County of Wayne, State of Michigan. Whereas this year marks the fortieth anniversary of Pastor Dr. Roger Strombaugh in retirement on May sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, from United Baptist Church in Garden City. And whereas, we give pause, honor, and praise this day for the deep and abiding commitment of Pastor Dr. Roger Strombaugh through his faith, worked unselfishly to provide valuable human services when the need was great. And whereas, our community has benefited from the fine influence Pastor Dr. Roger Strombaugh has exerted through his forty years in the ministry, and the many facets of his outreach and practical assistance to Garden City and surrounding communities. And whereas, it is a pleasure to extend this expression of our esteem and best wishes to Pastor Dr. Roger Strombaugh on this memorable occasion of this fortieth anniversary and retirement as pastor of the United Baptist Church. Now therefore, we, the mayor and council of the city, council of Garden City, congratulate Pastor Dr. Roger Strombaugh on his fortieth anniversary and retirement, and thank him for the many contributions and services to our community, with our best wishes for many happy, productive years in the future.
Thank you. Any discussion from council?
Just one thing, anybody that knows him, he's a remarkable man. I know some people that know him much more than I do, because I, I do not go to that church, but he, he's always there to lend a helping hand, whether you go to his church or not. If you're just somebody in need, he's always somebody that you could go to just to talk to, just to sit with. Wonderful man, and he'll, he'll be, I'm sure he'll stay involved, but he'll be greatly missed over there.
Yeah, he's an excellent pastor, and he's, he's been good for United Baptist Church.
Very.
He's been good for Garden City.
Yeah.
Any discussion from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C3, American Legion Riders Poppy Drive.
Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Move to grant permission of the American Legion Riders to hold their annual poppy sales
Move to grant permission of the American Legion Riders to hold their annual poppy sales on May ten, eleven, and twelve, and May seven, eighteen, and nineteen, if necessary, intersections to include Ford and Inster, Ford and Middlebelt, Ford and Merriman, Middlebelt and Warren, Cherry Hill and Merriman, and hold harmless and certificates of insurances that need to be provided.
Support.
More from Ms. Lynch, discussion from council, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Item C four, gasoline diesel fuel contract award.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to award the three-year gasoline diesel fuel contract to Oakland Fuels of Waterford, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year, and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Support from Ms. Dodge, any discussion, council? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Dodge, uh, Councilmember Lynch, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Item C five, special assessment Harrison two thousand twelve reconstruction project. Ms. Dodge?
I move to approve the attached resolution directing this assessor to prepare a special assessment role for the properties in the Harrison two thousand twelve reconstruction project.
Support. Support from Mr. Kerwin, discussion from council, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Item C six, call for a public hearing for Bach Lathers Reconstruction Project.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to approve the attached resolution calling for a public hearing to solicit comments of the necessity of the Bach Lathers Reconstruction Project on Monday, May twentieth, two thousand thirteen, at six fifty-five P M.
Support.
More from Ms. Dodge, discussion from council? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
C seven, civic ice cooling tower bid. Mayor? Mr. Jones?
I move to approve this civic ice arena cooling tower bid to Tech Mechanical of Pontiac, Michigan, in the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars, and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary agreements.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch, discussion from council?
I just want the public to know that thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents, well, thirty-three thousand, close enough, is coming from the county, which is the tax dollars that we pay, so, and the other four, forty-two hundred is coming from our contingency.
From the general public?
I speak with twenty-five, almost twenty-five years of being in charge of the ice rink. I was present when we built the ice rink outdoors, and I've been present for many things, including having to put a new slab in, because the dump, which was the Suppity Park, actually couldn't support the slab because it kept deteriorating. So when I hear somebody say something about a few pennies, and give somebody heck, was ticked off, because there were three or four thousand dollars that might come about. Totally unfair, to- totally unfair. Dan is doing a marvelous job, a marvelous job. And the money that is in question here hardly amounts to the four dollars that you're providing for each kid in the youth association. We have three million dollar surplus, three million dollar surplus, and our kids aren't getting any of the money to speak of, they're putting out a hundred thousand dollars in the youth association. You're gonna give them four thousand dollars in city services. And Dan, I'm telling you, I hear so much good about him, and I know what it takes on the operation of the arena. So I'm not up here as a dingbat, and I wanna let you people know it, but the speaker reminded me of the kid who during a ballgame, if he couldn't bat, he would take the ball and bat home. He's ticked off. Well, I'm ticked off, and I think the people of the city should be ticked off at the behavior at this table.
You have thirty seconds. You have thirty seconds, Mr. Weiser.
If you, if you have some criticism of a department head, go through the city manager, there's proper procedure for that, don't embarrass one of your department heads, you rely on them for too much. And I applaud Dan, and I hope that the youth association people and the soccer people and that will get their fair share come budget time, because I'm gonna be there.
Your time is up.
Talking to you about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Item C eight, construction contract for emergency sewer replacement for Dawson Avenue.
Mayor?
Ms. Dodge?
I move to award the construction contract for the emergency sewer replacement Dawson Avenue project to G V Cement Contracting Company of Brownstown, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars, and to authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch, discussion from council?
Yes, when did G V, when did Gastro get into the sewer repair business? How much do you know about this outfit, Jeff? How long's you been doing sewer?
Mr. Kern got sick tonight, and he couldn't be here, but if you look at his memo, they've done sewer work in other communities recently, and they've had no issues with him, along with the concrete work.
They do small sewer projects.
This is a small, relatively small project.
Yeah, I never known him to do this. Okay, so you're happy with this, right?
I got a good recommendation from the engineers, they checked him out.
Very good.
Any other questions from council? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
C ten, this is called for a public hearing, permitted use structures.
No.
I'm sorry, I skipped one, I'm sorry, construction, C nine, construction engineering for Dawson Avenue sanitary sewer replacement.
Mayor?
Mr. Kerwin?
To approve the proposal from the Tennessee engineers dated April third, excuse me, April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, to provide the necessary construction engineering services for the Dawson Avenue sanitary sewer replacement project, in the amount not to exceed eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars, and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch, discussion from council? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
C ten, proposed text amendment, permitted use in structures in the CBD, calling for a public hearing for May twentieth at six fifty-three P M.
Mayor?
Mr. Kerwin?
To introduce, proposed zoning text amendment to one-five-four-point-three-five-two permitted uses of structures, and one-five-four-point-one-four-five, cannabis to permit doggy daycare establishments as a special land use in the CBD, and call for a public hearing on May thirteenth, two thousand.
No, May twentieth, six fifty-three P M.
Oh, we changed it.
Yep, May twentieth.
May twentieth, six fifty-three?
Yep.
P M.
Support.
Support from Ms. Dodge, any discussion from council? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
C eleven, proposed zoning text amendment, calling for a public hearing for May twentieth at six fifty-four P M. Ms. Lynch?
I move to introduce proposed zoning text amendment to one-five-four-point-two-eight-six, permitted uses in structures to permit laundries and dry cleaning establishments with coin-operated machines, or with processing limited to goods brought to the establishment by the individual retail customer, provided that no goods are processed from any other location at principal use in the C two district, and call for a public hearing on May twentieth, two thousand thirteen, at six fifty-four P M.
Support. Support from Mr. Jones, any discussion from council? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Item C twelve, alley vacation, calling for a public hearing, May twentieth, at six fifty-two P M.
Mayor?
Ms. Dodge?
I move to introduce a resolution to vacate a portion of a public alley, and call for a public hearing on May twentieth, two thousand thirteen, at six fifty-two P M. Public alley is located in the northwest corner of Henry Ruff and Ford Road intersection, more specifically to the north of lots five-five-nine through five-six-three of Holkers Garden City Acres subdivision.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch, discussion from council? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
C thirteen, public hearing for C D B G funds for two thousand thirteen.
Mayor?
Ms. Dodge?
I move to schedule a public hearing on May twentieth, two thousand thirteen, at six fifty P M. on the proposed projects and funding amounts for the C B D G program and direct administration, to publish and post the required public notice of hearing pursuant to Wayne County rules, minimum ten days prior.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch, any discussion from council? From the general public?
I'd like to get some information relative to the public hearing scheduled, and I want to inquire whether, prior to the meeting, or any other public hearings that are coming up, whether information will be made available without charge to the general public as called for in the city charter, so that when a person comes to a public hearing, and it starts at six fifty-five, we don't get the information until six fifty-four. So I, I wonder if we can get an answer, and while Mr. Kern is here, I think it would be advantageous to broach this subject, not only for this particular public hearing, but others, and I understand, at our budget meetings, there was information which has been made available in the past, not been made this year, not been made under this council. So I wonder if this transparency that you boast about will ever come about, will ever come about so that the people can be informed and ask you some questions or discuss with you on a level which is what residents should be able to do, and I ask you, please, to clarify this, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Do you wanna say anything, Ms. Bettis?
Council generally receives a packet that includes all of the information that we will, of course, and that information packet is available online, I believe, and it's always available online, generally two or three business days before, well, at least two business days before the meeting. Is that what we're talking about?
I believe so, yep.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else from the general public?
I'm not talking about the whole packet for the council meeting, I'm just talking about the public hearing information.
Did you want me to continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Including any public hearing information, council gets a packet, if there is going to be a public hearing, there's information on the subject of that public hearing included in the packet. For example, the public hearings that council called this afternoon, I mean, this evening, all of those have information that council was provided, and all of that information, the same information that was provided to council, is available online and in the packets. The packets are available, I think, the fee schedule has had that available in it for a number of years.
Okay.
I hope I've answered.
But online, it's free.
It's online.
Online, it's free as a bird.
Mr. Weiser, you go online and get it, it's free online.
We don't go online. There are a number of people that don't go online.
That is also available to review at my office, all the packets are always, and also, if our beautiful library will be happy to assist anyone who's not familiar with how to do that.
All I want to do is ask if there is going to be available without charge, information relative to the public hearing, and not the packet, not an inch-thick material, the information relative to the packet that is going to be, the public hearing that's gonna be used there, without going online, since I don't go online.
I will give you mine.
Pardon me?
I will give you mine, and you'll have it available tonight.
And that would be true of all of the information that's pertinent?
Yep, everything that I have, I will give you on those public hearings tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lynch?
I, I'd just like to ask our librarian, Mr. Lynch, if somebody were to pull this up at the library, first of all, I'm assuming that you or one of the other people working at the library would be happy to help them find it?
Absolutely, we'd be more than happy to help people find this information online.
Okay, and if they wanted to print up X amount of papers, such as for the public hearings, what kind of a charge is there to print from the library?
Normally, there is a ten cent per page charge to print at the library, however, I can bring this before the board and see whether or not they would waive that for civic matters directly dealing with the city of Garden City.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate the answer.
You're welcome, thank you for asking.
So you have the Garden City library to go to as well, Mr. Weiser?
And they will help, it's a long walk for you, Mr. Weiser, please.
On behalf of the seniors, why don't you just have a copy up at the city hall where they can come and get it? I mean, now you tell them they gotta go to the library. What are we paying taxes for? I mean, I know when we do a Freedom of Information Act, we pay a dollar a copy, which we shouldn't, but these are seniors who are on a fixed income, come on, guys.
Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
C fourteen, state bid procedure for purchase of computer server. Mayor? Ms. Lynch?
I move to waive the competitive bid procedure and approve the purchase of a computer server from the state of, from the state bid contractor, H P Public Sector Store, one-zero-eight-one-zero Farnham Drive, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-five-four, as permitted by section thirty-five-point-zero-seven of the Code of Ordinances.
Support. Support from Mr. Jones, discussion from council? From the general public?
Every year, I'm not, every year, do that, every year, I'm not, I'm not, no, or take, by every year.
No, this isn't something that we purchase every year, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
No.
No, one time.
Thank you, Mr. Buckner. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Okay, we will move on to public comments that were not on the agenda tonight. There's a five-minute time limit, you wish to speak, come up to the podium, state your name, again, this is items that were not on the agenda tonight. Mr. Buckner?
Al Buckner, in the last meeting, the individual got up here, used my name in conjunction with Benny Napoleon, the Wayne County Sheriff, who is running for mayor of Detroit, talking about his lack of education. Tonight, before the start of the meeting, I gave each councilperson a copy of the Huffington Press, except the city manager, he got two copies, one for himself and one for the chief of police. Well, now, it's a respected publication in Detroit and other major cities, and being subscribed to it, there's an article that came out a few months ago, I'd like to take the privilege to read it to everybody and let you know. Social degree in law enforcement from Mercy College of Detroit in nineteen eighty. His B. A. In criminal justice from Mercy College in Detroit in nineteen eighty-two, doctor's degree from Michigan State University College of Law, eighty-six, graduated the FBI, National Academy, United States Secret Service, Judiciary Protection School, the Northwestern University of Police Staff and Command. Also, he did time at the University of Pennsylvania and Harvard University. Kennedy School of Government Execution Education, in which he was awarded a certificate of completion of senior executive of the state and local government, program in July two thousand and eleven. He's also a member of the State Bar of Michigan and has been licensed to practice law. So it's more than just one or two items, get your facts straight. So as you can see, it took me a while to read them all, so, as I said, make sure you search your information before you bring my name into it. We also had a realtor claiming that we only had forty-nine homes for sale in the city. At the same time, she admitted there was two hundred days on the market, trust me, there are some that's been down here for one or two years on the market, just like a lot of businesses there on Ford Road. I guess the hundred and twenty-five homes that are pending in the bank system and in foreclosure don't count. Either way, houses are cheap in Garden City due to blight and leadership we have in the city government, and the taxable revenue for the next two or three years is going to be six percent or less. Get ready, Garden City, vote for the same and you will get the same, higher taxes, less city service, and home with fifty percent less value. Being a supporter of this council is one thing, but being a missing form supporter only shows the citizens why we need to get out and vote in November for accountability and true transparency on the council. What is the meaning of accountability and true transparency? Wester Dictionary online said accountability is a state of being accountable especially an obligation and willingness to accept responsibility and account for one's actions. Example, public office of public officials lacking accountability, transparency, operating in such a way that it's easy for others to see what actions are being performed or not being performed. The council would have to think that they're being very accountable and transparent to us. They are if it's a road project, ball field, or soccer field. Now, if you want to see them go into a state of denial, ask them about the missing millions in the water fund for overcharging the residents for the last three years, or the missing millions from previous years, or about the promises that were made in the last election to get to the bottom of the missing two million dollars from the fifteen million dollar lawsuit that Jada Lynch voted yes on when she was the mayor, two thousand and six. Here it is, two thousand and thirteen, we still owe eleven million dollars on that lawsuit at a payment of one point three million per year for seven more years. That is why our taxes are the highest around, because we have had bad decisions from council that's costing us dearly. Houses dropping fifty to seventy-five percent, but our taxes keep going up. Why? Through special millages, special assessments, street lighting, ten percent rate hike in the water every year. Come this November election, you'll have the option to vote in the same style of unaccountable form of government, or elect a new ideal city government that puts the citizens first and not secondary. Walker recently in the news article bragged about what he's done in the city and his oath, he forgot a couple of things. In the four years under Walker's leadership, our taxes have gone while our home values have dropped fifty to seventy-five percent, and then causing our city to be more full of blight. Special assessment on the rubbish, street lighting, raising our water rates, and cutting city service, all this in just last year. My home has dropped forty-five thousand dollars in value, my taxes only dropped three hundred and sixty-three in four years of his leadership. How much has your home lost in value in the last four years? Now, if you want, now you want the third term to do what? What else can you give us besides more taxes, no accountability, and less transparency? They have raised our taxes while boosting about surplus in the general fund, missing millions of dollars in the water fund, breaking the state law, city charter, open meetings act, time and time again, without any remorse. Our city is full of blight from the doings, and yet they want you to reelect him to clean it up. Walker has shown contempt for breaking our charter, open meetings act, and state laws, is that what it has to come to keep all-time politics?
Mr. Buckner, your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallace?
First of all, Mr. Cronin, thank you for being here, thank you for protecting the Open Meetings Act, I appreciate that. It's been violated here several times, and there's probably, you're probably be going, oh shit, eight and three or more lawsuits coming up, open meetings act, constitutional rights, as soon as the Troy, the lady that gets her three million dollar lawsuit and Troy for the temporary manager throwing her out. But, anyway, I would like for the attorney to make the council aware that there's different laws between charter township, a township, and a city. So we don't realize that. Mr. Mayor, he mentioned some cities, supposedly cities, but there were townships, they have nothing to do with our laws, nothing at all. But, let me tell you something else that's available too. If we don't like what we got, Mr. Mrs. Dodge, or a staunch Democrat, and tell the, that you talked about one of our senators, and Mr. Obama is trying to get all the, the legacy cost down for cities. We don't need any added, added log, legacy costs. I think if Mr. Cronin will look up, it's against the law to put the same salary for a few different positions for a city, or township, or a state, or a federal office, it's against the law, you can't do that. Now, if you guys insist on putting the forty million dollars out there and having that legacy cost, there's other ways that the citizens can get away with this. We already have a legal petition drawn up, all we need is the signatures, and we can put it on there, we can elect a, a city manager, we put it on the ballot, to have the city manager elected, and also the city clerk. All right, I will read this, I've been, and Mrs. Kim Worthy will be listening to YouTube, watching YouTube. I know her and Benny Napoleon for years, I attended fourteen years of council meetings for ASCO at the city of Detroit. Let me tell you something else about Benny. Benny also served the community as a baseball coach for the boys and girls of Michigan, basketball coach for Detroit Police Athletics, student mentor for the Detroit Public Schools, chaired the Civil Rights Commission, and is a life member of the N. C. Double A. P. He is also attorney with a private legal practice, a thirty-third degree mason, it's hard to come by. Princess Hall Elliott, and serves as a professor of criminal justice at the University of Phoenix. And there's too many numerous to remind me, and let me tell you, Kim Worthy has got just as many credentials as here. The last person that got up here named three, for, two for her and three for Benny Napoleon, very well educated, very good people. It is time that you guys realize, the city of Garden City is not you seven people up there, it's not your seven people, it's the twenty-five thousand people that's here in the city, that's who you were elected to represent. If you don't want to represent them, then bow out. You guys, sometimes you want to control everything, you gotta think about the citizens, that's who represents this city, it's the citizens. Diane Webb told you guys that several years ago, it's the citizens. When you got independent and individual agendas, that is a bunch of bull, a bunch of bull. Citizens, you wanted to know why that we still have two people that's up here on the council that caused the fifteen million dollar lawsuit? And I told you, as I was going from door to door the last three weekends, 'cause you don't get out and vote. You don't get out and vote. Citizens, you gotta come and vote, you want rid of them, come and vote, vote them out, we need a change. Thank you, Mr. Cronin, I really appreciate you being here. And I think he should be here at all these meetings, you can save, might save ten cents, it'll cost you a dollar in the wrong run.
Thank you, anybody else? Yes, sir?
Thank you, sir.
I'll give them a fifty-five nine forty-nine alcohol, please, please, don't raise my sewer rates. Don't raise them, please. You'll be raising on every one of us, that's foolish. Come on, this shouldn't even be before you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, did you want to come up? Trying to come up.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Kevin Weinberg, I own Michigan Stream Combat Sports and Family Fitness. I just want to speak on behalf of the way the process has been going getting into the city, I expected to jump through hoops, I do every city, and every time I try to open up a gym. This seems a little bit more difficult than most. I just think that there's, I wouldn't say there's too many chiefs, not enough Indians, but there are too many hands in the cookie jar, and nobody's telling the others what's being said, so now, as a lot of you have noticed, I'm sending emails to the chief, the mayor, the city McKenna people, so everybody knows what's exactly going on. I'll do whatever I can to open this building according to the city's guidelines or whatever, but this is going to be a great asset to the community. I do a lot of stranger danger awareness, anti-bullying campaigns, I've been a coach for over twenty-five years in martial arts and over thirty-five years, and I have changed so many lives and kids growing up, that if this doesn't happen in the city, it'll happen in another city. I just have a, a partial connection with being a G. C. Y. A. Coach in the past for several years, and I want to be here, and I don't want to go have to jump through hoops that are on fire, I'll jump through every hoop you have, just don't light them on fire. So I'll do whatever has to be done, I have resolutions on the parking situation, it came to me tonight that we need so-and-so amount of parking, and it came to me, I shuttle my guys from different cities, I can let them park in public parking and shuttle them to my gym, that we can use the parking we have. It's not an open gym, where everybody comes in and goes and works out and leaves, it's a scheduled, scheduled, scheduled class from five A. M. to ten P. M., so I can dictate how many people are there at one time, how many people leave, if the moose has something going on, I can schedule around that, so I know, I would love to have five hundred people in that gym, trust me, it will only hold, me, the Inkster Fire Inspector went through there today, and with everything that's set up in there, I can only get a maximum of one hundred and twenty-five people in there. They did the math, did the formula, and they came up with one hundred and seventy-eight. And we would need eighteen more parking places according to what we have. The surrounding businesses do not want to deal with the liability issues, they need signatures according to McKenna authorities. If I can just get them to park across the street behind the, between Krogers and the hospital, where it's public parking there, I can shuttle them back and forth, I shouldn't need the issue of not being able to open up just for a parking issue. So if you can just work with me, I'm with Jim Wright, talking to him, he says he's gotten back with me, but now, I know he's getting with me because we're emailing, we're emailing now, there's no, he said, she said, no, he didn't, so everybody knows exactly what's going on, and I'll get email addresses, everybody on the board here tonight, and everybody will get exactly what is going on throughout the process of this. And then there's a few other people speaking on the same behalf, but this is a great asset to the community, trust me.
Thank you, sir, and I have asked the city manager to look into your situation. Yes, sir?
My name is, my name is Marty James, I'm from the Garden City Moos, I'm not here to run for office, so I'm not going to skate anybody, but these people are good, honest individuals who are trying to open a very viable business in a tremendously blighted building in our downtown section. This is not just a, a walk-up gym where you work out and go home. Like you said, there are classes, we have talked to set up a schedule between lodge functions and their functions, and how we can work around each other. This is going to be such an asset to this city and the downtown section to have a nice-looking operating facility like that. And I honestly believe that we've been being stonewalled a little bit here, because there's, we've been told, well, you're not supposed to talk to the D. D. A. I don't know if anybody realizes what D. D. A. stands for, that's Downtown Development Authority, they're the ones that should be helping a building in the downtown area. We've been told that, I've been told that, the guy said, Jim Wright told me, he didn't want to talk to me, he wanted to talk to Kevin, he didn't want to talk to Kevin's wife, wanted to talk to Kevin. He said, I had no vested interest in it, well, I do have a vested interest in it, that's our building, we own that old building, we need to, we're the ones that stand to improve as well as the rest of the city and these people, they deserve it, honest shot, and it just, it seems like it's not a very business-friendly situation. That's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Doyle?
Good evening, I guess I'd like to somewhat echo what the other two gentlemen said. For years, I've been training just to stay in decent shape, keep my health care costs down, I've had to go to neighboring cities, Planet Fitness in Westland, Forum in Westland, we have nothing available here. This is a fantastic opportunity for everybody, from youth to senior citizens, there's a variety of classes, workout programs, it is a good thing for the city. I don't understand what's going on, but I've been excited for at least three months when I seen the open soon sign on his window. What's happening? It's been three months. If you go to Grand Rapids, from application period to door opening for a new business is ten days, it's been almost ninety days here. I don't know what's going on, but we need to get it open. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, I think y'all, uh...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh. I think y'all are trying to put too much on her, you're asking her to come up with a, with a rate, a fixed rate for water meters. I'll give you the fixed rate, it's seven, it's the same rate as it is now, it's seventy-two dollars for every ten units of water that goes through the second meter, 'cause that's the sewage charge. And to say, ten people, maybe nine uses forty, and the other uses fifty, so you're going to have the other nine pick up the tens that the fifty use, so you can't do it that way, it's stupid. This whole situation is getting a plum out of hand. Every ten units of water that goes through the second meter that you don't charge sewage on, it's costing everybody else in Garden City seventy-two dollars, that's what it costs on sewage for ten units. How are you going to take fifty people, or a hundred people, and divide it between those hundred people, when one of them may water twice a week, and one of them may water once a week? So let's cut the bull, if you can't come up with some way, and I'd like to see them have their second meter, but who's going to pay for it? You come up with a way to pay for it, where the rest of us don't have to pay for it, give them two meters, give them three, I don't care. But so far, I haven't heard one word on how you're going to pay for that sewage coming through that second meter, that it's not going to pass the cost along to somebody, either me and everybody else in Garden City, or the five hundred, or however many people meter you got, you're going to divide that charge between those fifty people, say fifty people only getting, you're going to take the water that comes through the second meter, you're going to divide it by fifty and pass it on to the people that's got the second meter, which means they're paying the sewage charge anyway. So let's cut out the bull on it, if you can come up with a way to pay for it, that's fine, and when you do vote on it, whoever votes on it, you can pay for it. Don't pass it to me, if you vote yes for the second meter and don't come up with a formula, to come up some way to pay for that sewage charge, don't come to me, whoever votes can pay for it. And, and I'm, I'd like to ask, this too, as a lawyer, the water department is fine, is supposed to be user-paid. Now, when you switch that over to the rest of residents without coming up with a formula, I think you're doing it illegally to start with, 'cause now it's no longer user-paying for that water, it's everybody paying for the water that people are using on the second meter. So I don't know how you're going to make it work. I'm sorry they can't have their second meter, the man's grass is a ten out of ten, and there's other people got the same thing. But if you think the Garden City Hospital wouldn't be glad to stick a second meter in, you're crazy, 'cause they got a lot of water going. It can rain for five days and a six day, their meter, their sprinkler system is running, it's running out of an extra rope. So that's about all I had to say about the meter, and my friend spoke earlier about the sewage, passing the sewage charge along with him, Benny had talked about it, and he's, that's exactly what he's talking about. He doesn't want to pay for that excess, for the sewage on that second meter, neither do I, and I'm sorry, but you asked to do something that's impossible. She can't come up with any formula that's not going to make the people with the second meter pay the sewage charge on the water coming through the second meter. If she does any other formula, it's going to be passed on to everybody else in Garden City, and we don't want it. I don't water. If grass turns brown, that's tough, it'll get green when it rains, if it don't rain, I guess it won't get green. And I understand the man, he, I understand what he's going through, my wife's got flowers, and she's the same way, she'd break your leg if you mess with her flowers, and I understand that, but I'm not paying for nobody watering grass. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Smith.
Robert Smith, 10-50, you're up. This is about integrity in what we do. And myself and others feel that integrity being honest, and I feel myself, I shouldn't have to pay for something that I'm not getting. That's all I want to say. I shouldn't have to pay for anything that I'm not using. And I'm not going to pay for anything that I'm not using, even if I have to relocate.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Patterson, James Street, Garden City. I keep hearing all these comments, the mayor asking people to take a seat. And I hear my amendment rights are being violated, the Open Meetings Act's being violated. Well, I think this is almost so elementary. I'm embarrassed to be up here, number one. The right of free speech limits, is a limitation on the power of Congress to pass any law limiting free speech of citizens at peaceful meetings. And the comments that comes out of these meetings are far from peaceful. It is also to redress other grievances. Amendment one does not protect one's right to breach the peace. Now, each time you ask someone to take the seat, you should tell them the reason that you are of the opinion that they are breaching the peace. It's called disorderly conduct on the agenda. And a lot of items is spelled out there. Now, the Open Meetings Act 267 of 1976, Section 15263, six states in part, "A person shall not be excluded from a meeting open to the public except for breach of the peace actually committed at the meeting." And that's the reason I'm saying it should be defined each time a person is asked to take a seat. Breaching of the peace can be any act which disturbs the public or even one's, or even one's, one person's point of view. It can include any criminal contact, criminal act causing fear or attempting intimidation, such as displaying a weapon or shouting inappropriately. There are laws regulating breach of the peace. The Michigan Penal Code, Act 2328 of 1931, Section 750.170, Disturbance of Lawful Meetings. Garden City Charter and Code of Ordinances, Chapter 131, Section 131.03. And these laws give penalties for breach of peace. Garden City Charter and Code of Ordinances, Chapter 130, Section 130.99 has a five-hundred-dollar fine imprisonment, not to exceed ninety days, or a combination of both. Now, you know, this is my own personal opinion, nothing made of, I would like to hear from the attorney at some time, what is his opinion, if I'm way out in left field on this or not. And I think it would do the council good also. And if I'm correct, then the council should take action and establish consequences for what goes on at the meetings. I cannot get up here and just say, "Mr. Kerwin did this, Mr. Federer did this, Mayor Walker did this," so on down the line. There's reason things happen, you know? People are making a political statement when they get up here at every meeting of how to vote at the next election. My taxes have gone up, the value of my properties have dropped. That's all true. But it wasn't Walker's fault. It's the conditions of the times. What can we say? We're all caught in this problem. It's, so I don't, that's, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Weissick.
At the last meeting, Mr. Buckler stated home value sales are down. He cited the values of his home had gone down close to fifty percent. Yet his taxes dropped only fifteen percent. No words from the table as far as the statements were concerned. It was stated that Garden City homes were selling much quicker than Avonia and Westland on average, which probably makes sense inasmuch as the home prices are much different and could account for the few days difference as far as sales were concerned. No mention was made of the sale prices. References were made to investors are snapping up the garbage and improving their condition. The garbage. The investors' roles are as landlords or profit-takers. To my amazement, several of the council, when they went around the table at the end, gave thanks for being in, giving, getting the information. Garden City for Garden City. Council's saving on three million bucks. I stated that before. Three million bucks, potential perhaps to have more. The youth association runs sports programs each year since 1954, almost sixty years. This year, parents will pay close to a hundred thousand dollars plus volunteer services, which are astronomical as far as value is concerned. They are doing that to support our youngsters, a thousand youngsters in our community and close by. This council had the audacity to recently assist and enter into a contract that provides four bucks a kid. Four dollars a kid. I just am amazed to get. But this past Saturday, there were the opening day ceremonies. That council was strutting around there, giving speeches, throwing balls out, really proud of their presence, and really proud of what those kids are doing. I hope people will not forget them. Four bucks, that's what they reluctantly paid toward the programs which teach our kids, keep our kids safe and healthy. Four dollars. I asked youth association and everybody here, everybody within hearing distance, to come to the budget meeting and tell the council how they feel about four bucks per kit. That's what your kit is worth, your best investment in the world. Our future leaders, they're worth four bucks. And I applaud President Mike Collard. At the last meeting, we talked after the meeting, which was as suggested. Boy, were we attuned together. I've got a comment that Mr. Collard is a hard worker, doing great things for the city. And he's looking after the kids beyond four dollars. I also wanted to touch base on the FOIA request. I talked about it last time. Mr. Federer said he's comfortable with what we're charging, a dollar per page.
You have thirty seconds, Mr. Weissick.
Plus, work associated. You should call Mr. Cronin and have him go over with you the FOIA regulations in the state and those that are either proposed or in committee or have been passed since. Mr. Federer worries about the water meter, too much money, and I agree. But when it comes to the FOIA, ten times the amount is okay with him.
Your time's up, Mr. Weissick. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm going to talk a little bit about something that was said to me after the last meeting. The mayor always has the last word. What an advantage. His last words at a meeting was, "The Wysecks don't really realize that times are different." Really? We don't understand? I was born before the Depression. Women just gained the right to vote. Herbert Hoover was president when the Depression hit. It was tough. We lost our home. Men worked for a dollar a day. People went hungry. The dust storms hit the middle of our country. It was terrible. The Ku Klux Klan's posed as a religion was in full swing. As a youngster, I saw a cross burning on a Catholic lawn. Three families turned Protestant. FDR became our president. He got us out of the Depression by going in debt, put people to work, and improved our country. Roads, forests, parkland. The Depression lasted close to ten years. FDR was so great that he was the only president elected to four terms. Now, everything's settling down, and the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor. We were all glued to our radios to hear our president. Everyone was involved in the effort. My two brothers, immediately, they were teenage, signed up right away. One went to the South Pacific, the other to Europe. He was in the combat on D-Day. Bomber planes were made on assembly lines at Willow Run. Women worked the assembly line. That was a new one. Food was rationed. Everyone was so patriotic. Hooray, we won. What a celebration. Times were looking up. Our country didn't forget the men who served, and the GI Bill was voted in. Our country was so proud of those who served. The women gave up their jobs at the factory to give the men who came home from war their jobs. Truman, the atom bomb. Now, we all went out and had bomb shelters. I almost bought a house in Garden City that had a bomb shelter. Ray wanted it, but I wouldn't let him buy it. Korean War Treaty. McCarthyism. Eisenhower. Ray and I married and had seven children in eleven years. We were pretty busy then, and young people. And now we had a new title, "Parents." We took that title as mom and dad. Very serious. Kennedy and Johnson, new wars. Longest war in history was the Vietnam War. Civil rights came into being. Martin Luther King's speech, "I Have a Dream." The March on Washington by the young people stopped the war in Vietnam. Nixon had Watergate, started the war on drugs, resigned, resigned under pressure. Ford took over, pardoned Nixon. Carter, civil rights. Korean War Treaty, International Space Center. Reagan, Cold War, down with the Berlin Wall. Terrible trickle-down economics. Bush, Hubble Space Station with Bush. Arms controlled. We had control arms with Russia, peace thing with Russia during Bush's administration.
You have thirty seconds, Mr. Weissick.
I wanted to go into the other two, but you're all familiar with, I'm sure, what Clinton did. He balanced our budget, and there goes trickle-down economics. Now, we have two more presidents, and I don't even mention all the things that went on, how music changed, and flower children, and so many things. But believe me, the Wysecks do know about what they're talking about.
Thank you, Mrs. Weissick. Anybody else? You can only go up once, sir. Sorry. Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, to Mr. Wittenberg regarding the business he's attempting to open. We acknowledge there have been, there has been a great deal of miscommunication here, some on the part of the city, some on the part of Mr. Wittenberg. As a result of what's going on and the delays that have occurred, one of the things that I've done is that the DDA and Sarah Traxler are working on a manual on how to bring a business into Garden City and what you need to do. The conflict that has arisen here has been Mr. Wittenberg or his wife aren't communicating with the appropriate people, and that is causing a delay. And I think if we had had a roadmap in place, here's what you need to do. Because Mr. Wittenberg has been relying a lot on the DDA, who has a slightly different interest in businesses coming into the city. They're shepherding the business in while our building department is more about the nuts and bolts. Now, I don't know whether Mr. Wittenberg has received the information I gave you, Mayor, but that is typical of the kind of problems we've been dealing with. And please don't think for a moment that I'm pointing fingers at Mr. Wittenberg or anybody else. This just didn't go right, and we need to fix it. But as you know, you came to me with a complaint, which had actually come from somebody else, but not from Mr. Wittenberg. I provided you with some information. I have no idea whether Mr. Wittenberg ever got it. I will tell you that starting on April 25th, I have started checking in with Mr. Wright from the building department and with Sarah Traxler and Amy Neary on a twice-a-day basis. Have you heard from Mr. Wittenberg? Has he done any of these things? So we do have this massive communication that we're working on to correct because I want Mr. Wittenberg and his business in here. So I just want council to know that. Regarding Mr. Wyseck's comments about the GCYA and the soccer club, we sat down in the winter months with both of those organizations and said, "What do you need? What do you want?" Recognizing our present fiscal condition, keeping that in mind, things are a little bit better, but I think we all want to be careful that they continue to be better before we start reversing some of the trends we've been following. The soccer club and GCYA told us what they wanted, and we gave it to them. We are, the soccer club was under a heavy burden for water for their fields. I said, "Okay, we'd have a park there with or without you. We'll let that one go." The GCYA had a major issue with the electricity for the fields at Garden City Park. We brought in first, an expert to tell us exactly how much it costs for each one of those bulbs to come on for a GCYA game. And then subsequent to that, we'd now actually installed a separate meter so that we can meter exactly what added expense is going into the park. Now, there may come a time in a year or two from now that we won't need to meter that, that we will be able to absorb some of this to support our youth groups. But we are making, we made a giant step backwards, and now we are making baby steps forward to make sure that we can sustain what we do. It's been repeatedly brought up here about the missing millions in the water fund. I thought that we were told specifically three million dollars. I thought we were given an idea where that missing money was from, and I thought we answered those questions here at this meeting, one of these meetings. The missing two million dollars in the judgment fund, again. I thought we researched that and came back and demonstrated to council, this is where the money went. It's here. It's documented. Here's a paper trail. Mr. Wysex, and for anybody, regarding transparency, you want to document my office phone number, direct to me, is 793-1665. You call me, tell me what you want, and you will get it. That goes to any citizen. Tell me what you need to watch us, to keep an eye on us, and you will get it. And it'll be without a FOIA charge. I know that the city clerk's gonna whack me upside the head after this meeting for that. Council has received my manager's report of May 2nd, which was pretty thick. Just one thing I need to discuss with council tonight, and that has to do with the water issues that I pointed out to you in the city manager's report. That is, we have discovered some circumstances of underbilling. There are a small number of businesses in town that we have underbilled by ninety percent. It was a computer error. It was a programming error. A digit was being dropped or a decimal was being dropped.
A decimal.
A decimal was being dropped or moved. And it caused us to charge ten percent of the water fee instead of what it truly should have been. We can pinpoint this to exactly when it happened. It had to do with the change out of a certain meter. When that meter was put in, the programmed reader in the computer system just ignoring a digit in the meter. So we need to decide, council needs to direct me, whether we're going to go back and collect that money. It amounts to approximately a hundred thousand dollars. And I need a direction from council on that. We also discovered another underbilling error. We have certain customers that are Westland residents along the Garden City-Westland border that have not been paying a sewage charge. I'm not exactly sure where or when this happened. We can only go back as far as 2001 to document what is owed to us. But I also need direction from council on how we wish to pursue that. And that's about it for me. Other than, I will be out of the office starting tomorrow afternoon until Friday evening. Ms. Bettis will be the acting city manager and Lieutenant Tack will be the acting police chief.
Thank you, sir.
If I could, we're hanging fire on this water issue. I don't know whether council's had enough time to think about it since the report went out on Friday or...
Okay. Ms. Weisack?
May I ask a question to Ms. Bettis? If this were a regular resident who you realized had an underperforming meter, what would you do?
Charge them the past, like we did in the ROM differences.
And how far back do you go?
As far back as we have accurate records.
Okay.
I think they gotta pay for the water. I mean, that's...
Water and sewage, that's it.
It's a non-brainer, no-brainer.
No, I don't mind if it goes back ten years and, you know, we... I don't expect them to pay all at one time. If it took ten years to get there, then I don't mind giving them that time to pay it back, especially the Westland residents. We're talking quite a few years there.
I don't know.
Well, it makes them better than us.
Nothing.
They gotta pay too.
Yep.
But if you get a bill for eighty thousand dollars, one bill, it's gonna...
Oh.
You can't.
Yeah.
You can't. It's gonna be split up. You know? It does.
The Westland residents, though, because they're non-residents, don't they pay a hundred and fifty percent?
That's correct.
We charge them one and a half because they don't get the Garden City rate.
That's correct. By ordinance, we charge them one hundred and fifty percent.
So they've been paying that for water, they just haven't been paying sewage.
Right.
Ordinance also specifies that they should pay a hundred and fifty percent for sewage. And we did confirm with Westland that they're not paying any sewage bill with them. This is that odd little corner north of Maplewood in the area of Maryland.
By Barson's?
Yes.
Dillon?
Okay.
Down to one.
And then behind Barson's, that Dillon Street, which is Westland, right? Just on the one side?
Most of those houses on the west side of the street, yes.
Those are Westland houses?
Yes.
Okay, council.
Do you want it by motion?
I believe so.
Yeah.
We gotta get a direction.
So, do we want it as separate or do we want it as just all one?
Your honor, if I may. Ma'am? I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted... The ordinance says that everybody has to pay for their services. If it's okay with council, I'll just make a note that it's the consensus of council that the ordinance be followed in regard to any past due charges. And a no motion is necessary, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
But they won't be billed in one payment?
No, ma'am.
No, it is our plan that we will spread this out for as long as the era has been occurring. For instance, if they got the new meter in 2007, so that was six years ago, then they will have six years to repay.
I think the first thing, the proper thing, would be to send them a letter telling them what we found and then let them know that we will be sending you a bill in the next month. And it may be seem whatever, but state the facts as to what the issues are.
That's exactly what we're going to do. And in fact, that's how this came to come before council tonight because we are prepared to send the letter. But we know that this is going to generate a little bit of controversy.
Sure.
So we wanted to make sure council was informed and in support of it.
Okay. Ms. Weisack?
If I could ask, is there any way, and I don't know the exact way you would do this with your books, but that we could set up what I would call two accounts in some way so that that person could pay this water bill that will be corrected moving forward and it won't disrupt service, nothing will happen to it? And then X amount of money will open in a second account so that they can make payments on that? Because I really would like to see them keep all current water bills current. And if there's a way not to let the two mix together?
I don't know for sure, but I believe so and I will make that happen if that's council's design.
Okay. Because I'd like to see all current water bills stay current and then the mistakes of the past have to be paid on for a long time period, therefore, they can work on it.
And I believe there's also one other issue that should be brought to light and that if someone, they'd have to show proof of when they, if they had purchased that house in just the last few years or a year or two, I don't think it would be right for us to go back to them if they didn't live there on that money.
That is an incredibly valid point.
I don't want to charge somebody for what... They'd actually have to pay when they didn't live there, even though it wasn't...
That is a very valid point and...
Because if somebody bought that house...
However, I just will, just for point of information, charges to the property follow the property. I know that's not what anybody wants to hear, including me.
But when you buy a house and somebody bought one of those houses two years ago, part of the closing is a CFO and the CFO tells that buyer that this house is up to speed on their water bill. So they purchased the house thinking that the water bill's up to snuff. Now they're gonna get this letter saying it wasn't. That person's not gonna be able to go back to the original owner, so...
Or can they?
And we may not even have this... We may not even have this situation, but if we do, I think we need to...
I'm just sure it's brought to light.
In theory, they could go back to the title company. However, in my experience, in twenty-five years of municipal government, title companies don't ever want to pay anything.
Unless they're holding the money. But once they get rid of it, they're done. So I don't think we ought to charge somebody.
But let me find out, first of all, if that's the situation.
Yeah, we may not even have that situation, but if we do, we need to, I think, look at that different.
Yeah. And just one other thing, just for council's information. I'm just very concerned that things like this happen, and they have happened in the past, like the ROM differences and things like that. But what I would like to do in the future going forward, just to mitigate the possibility of this as much as possible, is have what they call, these are particular kinds of audits, that companies actually come in and examine this type of information in your computer system to see if there are discrepancies such as these. And I'd like to do those periodically going forward.
That's a good idea.
Makes sense.
Good idea.
Find out the price.
Yes, I will.
Now, did you add all these changes, these things that we have found into our water model?
No.
You will be, though, right?
I'm trying to think of how we're gonna do that, but I will talk to you about that on next Monday.
All right.
Okay?
Mr. Cronin, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, but thank you for asking.
Okay. Ms. Dodge?
Couple, couple quick things because I know it's hot in here and it's getting late. First, there was a question thrown out when we were talking about the DDA and we have a wife and a husband, the wife being on the council, the husband being on the DDA. The way the charter approaches it is it's a supermajority of the council have to confirm that person. Supermajority did confirm that person. We know that it exists and it's up to both of them that they conflict with each other, as our attorneys stated, for them to step up and say, "I can't vote on this subject because of this reason."
Ms. Dodge, could I fall in right there when you run that subject? With the mayor? I believe there would be a conflict of interest. Seen away, our chart, our charter is written. If you are, the mayor can't make it to a meeting, you can't appoint any of us except for the mayor pro temp. Is that correct?
Doesn't appoint, it just falls in.
To run that meeting.
Well, the liaison doesn't run a meeting, they don't vote.
If you're not there, the only one that can take over that meeting is the mayor pro temp, not a council member.
You mean a council meeting, correct?
No, no, no. No, the DDA.
Oh, no, no, no.
They have a chairperson of the DDA who runs that meeting, not our mayor.
What is your position there?
I don't run the DDA meeting.
No.
What's your position there?
I'm the CEO of the DDA, but...
Okay, who would be representing us if you weren't there?
It's usually either him or Pat. I filled in last meeting. Because neither of them could make it.
Specifically mentions mayor or the mayor pro temp. None of us. So I think that ought to be looked in, into, and before we answer too fast on that. That's all I have, Mrs. Dodge, just to let you know.
Yeah. But again, on any vote, just like I do with Ford Vehicles, you raise your hand before the conflict happens. So if that ever happened, she would just have to raise her hand and not vote. Abstain from voting, then there's no conflict. There's only a conflict of interest if you don't say nothing and you go ahead and vote. So if that situation come up, she would raise her hand and say, "My husband's on this board, I'm not voting on this."
Mr. Mayor, may I just focus a little bit on this one? Just because it's your spouse doesn't mean there's necessarily a conflict of interest. Not necessarily. Now, if there's financial interest, that may be a different question. But there is no prohibition on spouses serving on boards and commissions. They don't necessarily have competing interests or conflicting interests. They just happen to be married. And this occurs in a lot of settings. But the reality of it is, I don't think there's necessarily inherently a problem with having married couples on the same board or commission.
How about a child or a parent?
Each individual situation would have to be analyzed separately and the circumstances under which they're acting and what they're voting on and what they're doing would have to be decided. But just by the dint of nature of their relationship as husband and wife, doesn't necessarily mean there's a conflict of interest. Just so you rule that in.
Ms. Dodge?
And I didn't mean to.
Thank you.
More discussion on that. Okay, and then for the chief, please make sure the zoning text amendments that were in this pack that get the backup for it by the time we have the public hearing. And then the final thing I have is, for anyone interested, Twenty-first District Court is offering an amnesty program. And this is for a limited time. The court will waive default fees, twenty percent late fees and warrant fees on some cases if eligible. The amnesty program will run from May 1st, 2013 through June 28th, 2013. Payments must be made cash, money, order Visa, MasterCard or Discover cards in person. No partial payment has to be in full. If you'd like to take advantage of this program, please contact our Twenty-first District Court. If you have any questions, call 793-1680 between the hours of 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. So if you've got something that has been bugging you, now's the time because it can be cut way down and you don't have any worries anymore. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
The only thing I have is I'd like to give kudos to the Observer for their excellent article on the upcoming Kids' Day in the Park, which is less than two weeks away. They did a great job of describing the many activities that'll be available for children ages primarily three to eleven that the Quanis is providing. And so we look forward to a large turnout and appreciate your publicity.
Thank you. Ms. Lunch?
I just wanted to say what a wonderful job that the garden club has done in the Butterfly Garden. Not only did they clean it up, but they've really spruced it up with the things that they've added. And I wanted to give them kudos on their work in the Butterfly Garden. Also, the garden walk for the garden club is coming up on June 29th. Please mark your calendars. I believe tickets are now being sold at Barson's. So if you're looking for tickets for the garden walk on June 29th, they're available at Barson's. And also, I have to concur with the gentleman who spoke earlier. The tulips in the downtown area, the red all the way down Ford Road is just spectacular. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beth?
I would just like to remind everyone, because I believe this is our last televised meeting before the deadline, that candidates for mayor, council and library board must have their petitions and/or filing documents in to my office by May 14th. The deadline, I believe, is at four o'clock. Yep. It cannot be a minute late. If you are my very best friend in the entire world and it's 4:02, you will not be allowed to submit your petitions. If you are my worst enemy and you are two minutes late, you will not be allowed to submit your petitions.
And if you're your best friend?
I said that one first. So anyone who is interested in submitting those, let's make sure you make that deadline, please. Also, to the Bogowski family for the loss of their mother, I just want to send my condolences and my love frankly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cronin?
Yes, sir. Just a congratulations to one of our younger citizens. This resident is Landon Wood, who's three years old, just completed a great ice show over in Westland and look forward to him being a future hockey player. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Mr. Fetter?
Yeah, I have one thing. I want to send my hopes and prayers out to a friend of mine that I've become friends with him since I've been on council. And that's, there aren't many people that can say that. Gomer Goings. You may recognize him as the man that comes up here with the southern accent and the breathing machine. He's been in and out of the hospital and his health has been up and down like a yo-yo. He and I had lunch together at his home not long ago. He's doing very well. I saw him out and about with his kids at a restaurant the other day. Gomer, you look good. You still owe me lunch at a restaurant of my choice when you're better. And Godspeed. That's all we have.
Thank you. Also, our prayers go out to Pat Squires, that's why she's not here. Her mother took ill and she had to leave the state and go check on her mother. So our prayers are with you, Pat, and hope everything works out for you. Opening day, we had a great day. I commend the GCYAA and all the volunteers. It was a great day. It was great to see all the kids out there in their uniforms. And it was a fantastic day. For you council members that come, you missed a good day. Blight. The ordinance officer, now that the weather's breaking, he's driving around checking on blight. Houses, garages that need painted, gutters that are missing or falling down.
on blight, houses, garages that need painted, gutters that are missing or falling down, porches that are crumbling. And also, the city manager, myself, do a weekly drive around. We're making a list and we give that to the ordinance officer. There's a responsibility to homeownership. So take pride in keep your property up, cut your grass, help make Garden City look great. And if we do write your address down, the ordinance officer's not gonna come write you a ticket, he's gonna knock on your door and ask you to correct it. If you don't correct it and he comes back, that's when the tickets start getting written. But we're just asking for you to comply and help make Garden City look great. And to the gentleman with the gym, we are looking into it. And we gotta streamline and make it easier for businesses to come into our city and do business. And I think that roadmap catalog will be a great thing. It's not gonna help him right now, but we need to expedite this so he can open up and start making some revenue. He's paying rent for four months and he's got no revenue coming in, so that's not good. We'll try to correct that as best we can. That's all I have. No further business. This meeting's adjourned.